Thank everyone for coming out tonight. We're going to convene as a zoning and land use commission first. We will have the prayer by Mr. Thibodeau and the pledge by Mr. Rogers.
Brother, thank you this evening for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for the assembly. We thank you for deliberation. We pray and hope that what we do here is beneficial to our parish and to our citizens. And Lord, as we now enter the second month of hurricane season 2025, we hope and pray for your grace and covering our parish for the entire term. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, Ms. Becky, roll call.
Mr. Michael Billiard, Mr. Terry Gold, Mr. Robbie Liner,
Here.
Mr. Clarence McGuire, Mrs. Angel Poinson, Mr. Jan Rogers,
Here.
Mr. Trevion Smith, Mr. Barry Soudier, Mr. Wayne Thibodeau. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that any time tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized, as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself for participating in the debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time?
You need to recuse yourself for H2.
Okay, I'll recuse myself of H2.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the zoning and land use commission of the regular meeting of June 26, 2025. I need a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Billiard. All approved, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Communications.
No communication, sir.
Okay. We are moving to F, public hearing. Rezoning from R1, single-family residential, to C2, general commercial. 710 May Street, Lot 6, Block 4, Addendum Number 1, Fair Side Subdivision. We have someone, uh, yes, sir. Mr. Derrick. Yes, sir.
I was gonna say normally at the beginning you say that, uh, when we have councilmen or women present. I see Mr. Carly Harding in the audience right there.
We got Mr. Carl Harding here. Anybody else? I'm sorry, we almost got a full house tonight. All right. Okay, back to staff recommendations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a proposed rezon from R1 to C2 for multifamily residential use. This is the third consecutive meeting that the applicant has not posted the required public hearing notice on the site. If the application is denied tonight, it would not move forward to the Terrebonne Parish Council for further consideration because it hasn't had proper public notice to begin with. Uh, staff's recommendation is to deny due to failure to provide adequate public hearing notice on site.
All right. Thank you, administration. Need a motion. Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, is, is, is the applicant in the audience?
I think the chairman called to see if there's anybody here to speak on this matter.
Okay. I'd like, uh, to offer a motion that we deny as per, uh, staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau and a second by Mr. Billiard. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. All right. G, old business. A reconsideration of planning and building group. Conditional approval given on May 15, 2025 for the placement of five residential units. 7389, 7393, 7397, and 7401 on Park Avenue has a revised plan. Yes, sir.
Yes, Ken Rembert helping out, uh, on, on this project, uh, for Richard and Real Estate and Management. Ms., uh, Ms. Brown has made a few changes, uh, on her, on her map. We've added a few things. And, uh, we would like to, uh, get it reapproved being we have a few changes on the map. We still have, uh, five duplexes, uh, like we had before. We just added a few other things, like we changed the position of the, uh, access street. We changed the, uh, we added a playground area on it. And I think there's, uh, she might have added a few, uh, fences out there. But, uh, we'd like to see about getting a revision approved if we could.
So I know it's not, uh, we don't have a public hearing on this one, but does anyone here from the public would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is placement of five multi, two-family, multifamily residential units on a single parcel, uh, located at 7389, 7393, 7397, and 7401 Park Avenue in a C2 zone district. Uh, matter was conditionally approved at the May 15, 2025 zoning and land use commission meeting, uh, with the incorrect site plan. The applicant has resubmitted the correct site plan with different configuration than previously approved, but the overall number of units has stayed the same. Uh, the proposed duplex development still meets the requirements of Chapter 28, Article 5, Section 92 of the Parish Zoning Ordinance. As it pertains to drainage, the final plans would be approved as part of the building permit process, uh, the vehicular and pedestrian circulation, off-street parking, and building spacing. They have received setback variances from the Board of Adjustment on Monday, May 19, 2025, and a play area will need to be provided. Uh, the following comments from Mike Palmer at Bayou Kane, Chief of Fire Prevention are still applicable. The proposed access road is 18-foot wide. NFPA 1 states fire department access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet. Uh, and the proposed access road will also require fire hydrant. Um, NFPA 1 states fire hydrants shall be located not more than 12 feet from the fire department access road. Staff recommends approval of the revised site plan for planned building group conditioned upon the applicant satisfying the Bayou Kane Fire Protection District's requirements and placement of a playground area. And both of those, uh, conditions would, they would be able to, um, uh, comply with those, uh, during the building process.
Okay. Thank you, administration. Uh, looking for a motion or question from commissioners. Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, Mr. Rembert, the developer planned to, uh, comply with item 1, bullet 1 under the Bayou Kane Fire Department in terms of the 20 feet versus the existing 18 now?
Oh, yes, we, we redrawn the plan to show 20 feet.
They're on the plan.
And, and we also have to put another fire hydrant in. And that could be done before we get a, uh, you know.
Yeah, I see both of these, okay.
And they, they actually have a play area on the revised plan as well. It's, um, it's hard to see the building numbers, but I think it's between building 3 and 4. It's the... It's there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve and then, uh, staff recommendation.
Motion by Mr. Billiard. Second by Mr. Gold. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you much.
Yes, sir. All right. H, new business. Preliminary hearing. A rezoning from R1, single-family residential, to R2, uh, two-family residential. 127 Samuel Street, southernmost, uh, 20 of Lot 15 and northernmost 30 of Lot 16, Block E in Mechanicville. Uh, do we have someone representing them? Okay. We just need a, uh, motion or by a commissioner. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mrs. Smith. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. All right. Uh, HB. Rezoning from R1, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential, 2620 Isaac Street, um, Lot 14, Block 2, Barrowtown subdivision. Once again, need a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mrs. Smith. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Staff report.
No staff report for zoning.
Uh, commissioner comments? Public comments? Need a motion to adjourn zoning and land use commission? I have a motion by Mrs. Smith, a second by Mr. Billiard. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. All right.
Got another council member just walked in too.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna call him out again. Ready, Beck? All right. Now we're gonna move on to, uh, the convening of the Regional Planning Commission. Once again, we'll have the, um, prayer by Mr. Thibodeau and the pledge by Mr. Gold.
Again, Lord, we thank you this evening for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We ask and pray for your blessings upon these deliberations. And we know that what we do here will be beneficial and of value to our citizens in Terrebonne. These are the blessings we have in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. All right, Ms. Becky, roll call.
Mr. Billiard, Mr. Gold, Mr. Liner,
Here.
Mr. McGuire, Mrs. Poinson, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Smith, Mr. Soudier, Mr. Thibodeau. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that any time tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized, as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself for participating in debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time?
Recuse myself of H2, H2? H2.
All right.
Hey, you already did that on the first agenda.
That was good, I was sorry.
Okay. I see. I'm gonna get it. Okay, we would like, we have two council people here now. Um, and if y'all like to say something, Mr. Carl Harding, and Ms. Kenneth Chauvin. You wanna come in the mic and say anything?
Okay, is it the same process, name, address?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Kim Chauvin, uh, 5248 Vice Side Drive, uh, Chauvin, Louisiana. Uh, one of the things that I find as a councilperson that we're dealing with is we're creating a lot of civil lawsuits because we're having people come before the planning commission and not give the whole story of what they're about to do with land. Um, I would request, and Chris, you can tell me if this can be done, but we need to really look at some of these ordinances to where, um, when it comes before the planning commission, they get the whole story of what's being done with land. I am pro, you know, you own the land, I get it. But when you begin to, um, encroach upon your neighbors with value of property and doing things that will concern drainage, sewage, those types of things, we're creating a mess. And we need to fix that now. So Chris, if you have any ideas that we can bring, you know, that we can start on to bring before the council, I would really like that.
Okay.
And so that's where it is. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Uh, D, we're going to approval of the minutes of the Homer Terrebonne Regional Planning Commission. Sure.
Want to say something? Is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, uh... Yeah. I, uh, just want to thank the councilwoman for coming and bringing that because I've always thought that we could do more. Uh, and I'm not sure you need a new ordinance. I just think perhaps without incriminating anybody, we need to be more assertive as staff and commissioners with regards to folks coming, asking for certain things, and then summarily, sometimes we just pass them and go on about our business. So I, I just, I just appreciate it. Thank you very much. And hopefully, the commissioners and staff will take notice and, and, and start to maybe look at all of this a little better and a little closer. So thank you.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Thibodeau? Okay. D, approval of the minutes of the Homer Terrebonne Regional Planning, um, Commission minutes for our regular meeting, June 26, 2025. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Ms. Angel. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. E.
I move to approve the remittance of payment for the July 17, 2025 invoices and the Treasury Report of June 2025.
Motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mrs. Smith. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Communications.
Uh, no. I do have one. Yeah. G1, I think. Definitely tabled. Yeah. Oh, right. Um, I do, uh, pertains to item G1. Uh, this is an email from Ty Westerman at DDG, uh, to Becky, uh, on July 9, 2025. They're, uh, requesting to, uh, just table indefinitely in case something else comes up. We'll, we will let you know when we're ready to put it back on the agenda. So they're requesting that, that their item be tabled indefinitely.
Okay. So we want a, a motion, please. Mr. Thibodeau.
Yes, sir. I'd offer motion to table as per developer's request.
Motion by Mr. Thibodeau and a second by Mr. Billiard. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Need a motion to take G2 off the table. Uh, revised tract 2B and Lot 2B1, a redivision of tract 2 belonging to Mr. Frederick Trich. I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, who gave the motion? Mr. Smith has the motion and a second by Mr. Thibodeau. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Yes, sir.
Yes, Ken Rembert representing, uh, Freddie Trish. Uh, he has a parcel of land that's, uh, located on North by Black Drive. And, uh, he has a rather large tract of land. And one of them's gonna be, you know, still stay large, but he has a friend of his he'd like to sell a lot to, or maybe, I don't know, donate the lot. He wanted me to create a lot, uh, along by, uh, North, North, uh... North by Black Drive, uh, so that he could, uh, you know, either give or sell to his friend. And, uh, we have, uh, uh, we have to ask for a variance on the fire hydrant distance because the hydrant is 260 feet, which is 10 feet over the 250. And we've asked for variance on that. And, uh, uh, we had tabled it last month because we didn't have engineering, uh, taken care of, but that's been taken care of now. And we have, uh, utility letters. And we'd like to proceed with, uh, trying to get this approved.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kenneth. Uh, staff.
This, do we already do the public hearing?
We did, it's not on there.
Okay. So this is a minor subdivision process, D, to create two lots for single-family residential and raw, uh, raw land use. The lot configuration and layout meet Parish subdivision regulation standards for development, except for the fire hydrant distance requirement. The existing hydrant's 260 feet away, which is within the HTRPC 10% policy. The remaining portion of the tract has been identified as raw land, so the applicant needs to be aware that they will need to submit a new application to the planning commission in order to remove the raw land designation prior to any development requiring a building permit on the tract. All utility letters have been submitted and drainage calcs have been approved by TPCG Engineering. Staff recommends approval of the fire hydrant distance variance as it is within the allotted HTRPC 10% distance policy and approval of the subdivision.
Thank you, administration. Need a motion, please, or a comment. I have a motion by Mr. Billiard. Second by Ms. Angel. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right. H1, Lot 2A and 2B, a redivision of property belonging to Mr. Norman Billiard.
Yes, uh, Ken Rembert representing Mr. Billiard. Uh, my office is at 635 School Street. I forgot to mention that here in town. At any rate, uh, they came to me and, you know, wanted to... They came to the office and asked me to, uh, subdivide this large tract of land that they have. And, uh, with the intention, I think he said of, uh, one of the tracts would, uh, then go to one of his neighbors, one of his relatives, rather, perhaps his wi, his mother, I think it was. That's the purpose that, that, uh, that they told me that they wanted to divide it for. There is a problem. We, we have a 20-foot entrance on one of the lots, and we'd like to see about getting a variance on that. Being it's, uh, less than 25 feet.
They still having trouble here, and you, Mr. Kenneth, if you could just speak up a little bit.
Yeah. The, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can y'all hear?
Yeah. At any... Pardon? Okay. We have fire hydrant detection. We have good utility letters. Uh, we had, uh, drainage calculations done. We do have an issue with the septic tank, whether double-wide is. And, uh, we'd like to see about getting a conditional approval if we get the variance on the 20-foot entrance on one of the tracks. And, uh, that's it. We'd simply like, like to divide this land into two pieces.
Okay. Let's, uh, open it to the public on this matter. Anybody want to come speak on this matter? And if the majority of people is here for this, we're gonna try to do like three minutes a person, so we give everybody a chance.
I appreciate your time. My concern is...
Uh, name it, name an address, please.
Lorraine Foray.
An address?
My address is the front property.
Uh, yeah.
4352 Highway 56.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes. My concern is, um, the property we have, I took pictures of his property, his 20-foot that he wants to extend to it. It's right behind people's sheds of their property. So if he's putting a road right here, if someone falls out their back door of their shed, they literally gonna fall on the road. So my concern is, we, I talked to some of my neighbors, they elderly and they got grandkids, and they concerned about a highway being put or road or street to pass right there next to them. And then our utilities, our electric and our sewage, and, um, stuff passes underneath the area that he want to be putting the access road. And so my question is, is how close is he gonna be allowed to put a street with people passing cars right there behind people's houses? And I took pictures, one of the, one, on his boundary line, the telephone pole goes right down his boundary, under 20-foot. That's why he wants to go down. Plus, our sewage drainage goes right there. And then on the back of the property...
I think he's, he, is his permit, is he applying for two residential? Uh, Chris?
I'm sorry, what's that?
He's applying to separate this two property into two, both of them residential, right? Which means he only could put literally a house on each one. Is that what he's applying for?
So... Well, there's already a mobile home on, on one of them. It's not zoned. So he could, at the end of the day, could put more than one dwelling on these lots. But he would also have to be mindful of residential building park regulations, um, which also state that you can't have access through a established subdivision. So like that lot, for example, the, the, the remaining portion of the lot that has its access off of Lori Ann could never be a mobile home park or residential building park because its access is through Donalee down to Lori Ann, through the subdivision. Now, the lot that is proposed, the proposed lot 2B that actually has that 20-foot strip going out to the highway, that's not through the subdivision. So not to say that, I mean, the application is for single-family residential use, not a mobile home park, because if that's what it was, then the letters that everybody got would have said mobile home park. And that's conceptual preliminary engineering final, just like a subdivision. And, you know, it's, it's, again, single-family residential, it's not identified as a RV park either. RV parks are commercial use, by the way, not residential. So the standards for development for commercial differ from residential. So the engineering approval that was done by Terrebonne Parish Engineering was for proposed residential use. So if all of a sudden he shows up and he starts putting RVs and turns this thing into an RV park, well, now he's gonna be sideways with TPCG Engineering.
Got it. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Sorry, sidetracked.
No problem. He has told our neighbors, three of our neighbors, including, I think he told us, uh, sideways, but he told two or three of our neighbors that he doesn't intend opening up a RV park one day. And he told them that he has a way of getting around people, around things, because he knows people. Well, I would like to submit these pictures, if y'all wouldn't mind, showing the property line of where my property starts, where mine finishes, and where his 20-foot's at. If, for him to go even 20-foot, he's actually going about a foot into other people's properties. His backdoor neighbors. And some of them is running directly behind the shed.
Gotcha.
Now, he has been kind of, um, keeping this kind of a secret, what he's doing, but he's been talking to a couple of neighbors.
And that's what we're trying to get transparency on what people are doing with their property and, and the neighbors not get surprised. So I'm glad y'all here talking about it because...
We have a few, we have part of a few of us, we have a few of us here.
These are the kind of things that, um, I think Mr. Thibodeau and Ms. Chauvin is kind of referencing to when people bring this to us and, you know, tell us one thing, but go back and do another. There has to, you know, we gotta hold them accountable some kind of way. Um, can't pull a permit for this and then do that.
Yes. Well, I went and find my survey markers. We unburied them and I put a pole there. Because in the past, we've let him use his, his vehicle to just travel even like one foot on our, on our land and the rest on his land. That, you know, we don't want to make rude enemies with our, with our neighbors and stuff. But if this for personal use, we don't mind. But if he wants to put a street, then he's gonna be going over our sewage, going over our electric field, our electric lines. He has to move our electric pole. He has to cover up the drainage where people's drainage goes into the front, which is in the pictures. He has to do a lot of extra stuff to it. And if he wants to turn around and do this later down the line and kind of get around things, it's not really fair to the neighborhood.
No, we agree. We agree.
So I appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am. Um, anyone else from the public on this matter? And once again, sir, be, name an address and then...
My name is Lonnie Mattern. I live at 230 Donalee Drive, uh, on the end of the street, uh, right at the back of the property, on that one you were looking at. Now, I don't know. I mean, according to this paper what they sent us, you know, he's just trying to divide his property up into two, two pieces, according to what I'm seeing. And I don't know why you need a 20-foot right-of-way to make a driveway going to your house. My driveway is 10 feet wide, 360 feet long.
Good point.
So, I mean, you know, obviously, there's more to this project than what he said.
Good point.
He's trying to get that wave. Now, y'all was over here last night, just saying you're gonna make more stringent rules for RV parks and trailer parks and things. You know, new rules coming out, they want new rules. But what, what's the point? I'm all about it. I, I'd like to have stringent rules so we can have nice RV parks, nice trailer parks. That's nice. But the only thing is you wave everything and you got nothing. It's back to where we was. You can't do that. You know? Let's make some rules and stick to them. Now, I know, you know, it's hard enough to sell properties down in South Louisiana, right, right, South Terrebonne right now, as it is. And they just tried to sell a house on that property, on that street right there, And they just tried to sell a house on that property on that street right there, just so, he tried to ask a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That was a really nice house. And it took months. And I think it was about something like six to eight months to sell that house. You know, as it is.
Yes, sir.
You put another trailer park, a RV park in there, then it takes even longer. It, it increases the pa- the value again. So, but anyway, I'm saying, I got a whole bunch of, I just built a RV park and I got all the rules, regulations from state. Mine was on a state road highway. And I, I got all the rules and regulations, I got all kind of rules. I had to follow, I don't buy by. But why, why doesn't everybody abide by the rules? Everybody's getting everything waived, it seems to me. Because I got, I had to put, you know, uh, laundry room, all this stuff, his and her bathrooms and showers, all this stuff. Ain't nobody even got a building.
Well, well, you bring up a great point because the parish is voting on something on the thirtieth to pass some regulations.
Well, I thought they had regulations according to me. I got a booklet right here with all kind of stuff.
Well, actually, so what the parish should be vote, parish council is holding a public hearing on, on July thirtieth is for an ordinance for a proposed moratorium on RV parks. Um, pending approval of the RV park regulations that a draft of those is going before you guys later on on this agenda. But ultimately would then have to go to the council for finer, final consideration and adoption. But I think the council was trying to get ahead of, of, of that to say, okay, well, at least let's, let's try and put a moratorium on RV parks until we get these ordinances in place.
Makes sense. Mr. Derrick?
I, I just wanted to say, I'll, I'll let him finish cuz I don't wanna cut into his time, but after he's done, just call back on me so I can clarify that even more so for you guys, for the mor- about the moratorium and the uh, with the council.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, it just, you know, like I said, I, I know the bill, he's entrepreneur.
I'm all about entrepreneurs. Hey, we can, we can think of some good ideas of what we can do with this property without, you know, it's thinking something to build up the, the community instead of the, lessen it, you know?
Yes, sir.
We can do better than that. And, you know, for me, that's a no, you know, because you know what? He's draining, he's gonna drain his sewer, all that's gonna drain on me. I'm, I'm down, I'm, I bought the property right below him. He doesn't have any drainage back there at all. I mean, this is about the right away in the front. But like I said, I don't know why he needs twenty-five foot if he's only, but making two, two lots, you know, two houses. I, you can do that with ten foot.
That's a great point.
So obviously there's something else to it.
Agreed. Thank you. All right, next on this matter.
Probably.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's fine.
Go ahead.
So just to clarify for the board, so um, on July thirtieth, the Terrebonne Parish Council is having a public hearing for anyone that wants to go, and they are voting on a moratorium, which is a halt on RV permits, not all permits, but those that would be affected by the new uh, proposed RV park regulations that this commission will be discussing tonight. So they would put a halt on all those until they approve or deny the ordinance that y'all would be recommending to them, which would come in August, I think fourteenth or so, thirteenth? So that's what it is. It's just a halt on-
Assuming that there's a recommendation to move it forward to the council tonight.
Yes. That doesn't put any restraint on y'all, y'all don't have to do anything on it tonight. It's just that's what the moratorium's on.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Derrick. Uh, Mr. Billiat? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to ask Derrick.
Oh, yeah?
I just wanted to ask Derrick if you knew, uh, is there any, I, I listened to the Terrebonne Parish planning, uh, the Terrebonne Parish-
Yeah, Mr.-
I listened to the Par- Terrebonne Parish Council meeting. Do you know if there's any, uh, is there, is there a lawsuit that has been filed or a court judgment that has been rendered that would have an impact on uh, RVs?
Mr. Derrick?
I'm waiting on mic. Oh, um, no, there's been no lawsuit against Terrebonne Parish federal government that would have any impact on our situation with RVs.
Okay.
Okay.
There hasn't been, oh, sorry.
No, on Terrebonne.
Yeah, sorry, I thought you was done.
Sorry about that. There hasn't been?
But the judge has not put the parish on a moratorium to issue any RV permits, no.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say. Okay, you good, Mr. Billiat?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes, sir. Name and address.
Name is Norman Billiat Junior. I'm the one that owns the property.
Okay, yes, sir. What's your intent?
The thing is, uh, yes, there was once upon a time that I was gonna do-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, address forty-three sixty-five Lorraine.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a point in time that I actually was wanting to do a boat and RV storage and do an RV park, do a trailer park. Everything was like in the air. But the thing is, I'm not actually doing a boat or, I mean, a trailer park or anything like that. So as far as worrying about sewer and all that stuff, I'm not even doing it. So as far as the word going around the neighborhood saying I'm doing a trailer park and all, I'm actually not even doing it. And the thing is, I wanna build me a shop because I weld. I own Billiat's welding service. I weld all the time. I own Billiat's roofing and carpentry. I do work. Mr. Mr. Billiat, he knows me. He knows my family. It's like, but I'm not doing a trailer park or an RV park. I wanted to do it. But when I started looking into all the stuff that you gotta go by so much regulations, it's actually more of a headache than it's even worth. So I thought about putting me some, be honest with you, I was gonna turn around and do some storage. I wanted to put me some, a storage shed on there. I wanted to put me a shop on the property. But that's really all I'm trying to do. As far as the driveway and all that stuff that's on the side, um, I don't remember the name. That's how much I talk to them. I mean, the ones that live in the front. Yeah, I mean, I drive up and down the property all the time with my cargo trailer. I wanted to put gravel because I have a big twenty-eight-foot cargo trailer. I do go up and down all the time. But as far as like doing a trailer park and RV park, you can forget it. I'm not even doing that. It's just too much stuff. And then when I found out the sewer treatment plant, cuz I actually talked to, I think, Ms. Linda, I think that was her name earlier today. I had talked to her and she told me it's a whole different ballgame. So really, I'm just trying to put me a storage shed and a big, some stuff on it. But as far as this trailer park, I'm not even doing it.
Okay.
And about Mr. Lonnie and his property in the back, he ain't even gotta worry about no sewer treatment or sewer in any kind of way cuz I'm not doing any of it.
Okay.
I'm just trying to clear the air on it because everybody's thinking that's what I'm doing, but I'm not.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone, anybody had any questions for him before he walked away? No? Okay. Anybody else wanna speak to the public on this matter? No? All right, gone once, public. Gone twice, public. Three times, public. I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Rogers. All approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single-family residential use with a variance request from the minimum twenty-five-foot lot frontage requirement for proposed lot two B. Uh, lot configuration and layout meet parish sub- subdivision regulation standards for development, except for the frontage. TPCG Engineering has issued an approval letter. All utility service availability letters have been submitted. The Louisiana Department of Health has issued a letter of objection dated July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, citing sewer system violations at forty-three sixty-five Lorraine Street. So that will need to be addressed before the Department of Health can issue a letter of no objection. The municipal address for proposed lot two B needs to be depicted on the plat. Currently, the subject property meets the frontage requirement along Lorraine Street, which is a stubout street off of Donna Lee Drive. But the property also has a twenty-foot of frontage along Highway fifty-six. Parish subdivision regulations allow, only allow for one lot at the end of a stubout street. Since the application lists the proposed use as single-family residential, staff does not feel that the variance would negatively impact the area as a strip is wide enough for a single driveway. If or when the applicant does apply for a building permit to place a structure on the property, they would need to obtain a DOTD driveway permit as part of the building permit application process. Staff has received multiple calls and emails from nearby residents inquiring as to whether this will be a mobile home park or an RV park. The only application we have before the planning commission is for this minor subdivision to create two lots for single-family residential use. If it were being proposed as a mobile home park, then residents would have received public notices advertising as such. Currently, the parish has no RV park regulations or notice requirements, but there is a public hearing for consideration of RV park regulations on tonight's planning commission agenda. There is also a proposed moratorium on future RV parks that is going to a public hearing before the parish council on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends approval of the variance and approval of, of the subdivision on the following conditions. Municipal address for the proposed lot two B be depicted on the plat and an approval letter from the Department of Health.
Thank you, administration. Uh, Commissioner, comment or motion? Uh, Mr. Gold first.
I would like a little clarification on the uh, the shop. It's, it's stating that it's for a single, uh, single-family residential use. But Mr. Billiat clarified that he was gonna be doing a workshop or welding shop. So I would like a little clarification on that.
Uh, Mr. Billiat, if you could come back up?
Well, I'll, I'll let Mr. Billiat speak first.
I, I'll, I'll add on to that. If you could tell us too, why are you also extending the driveway? Why are you looking to for variance on the driveway size?
Might-
Hold on, we'll get you a mic. It's not, let's let it turn green. You got it back? Uh, yes, sir. The variance on the driveway size and also you applied for a single family, but now you're um, you're asking, you're saying you're doing a building.
Yeah, I was gonna do a building and stuff like that. I was trying to find a fifty by seventy shop. That's what I wanted to do, honestly. I mean, yeah, I wanted to do the trailer park and RV, but that was before I started learning into this stuff. I mean, it's just, it's a can of worms and a half to try to do an RV park and all that. That's why, uh, yeah, I did say I wanted to do that, but that's, that's out the question. It's just too much headache and hassle. I mean, as far as the driveway on the side of the, the house in the front, I use it all the time because I pull a twenty-eight-foot cargo trailer with a dually. And it's not that easy to turn on Donna Lee into my little, the little side street. That does, it gets to be a pain in the butt, it's hard. And the bad thing is, they got the dead end sign and the stop sign. Trust me, I've almost nailed it so many times, it scratched up my cargo trailer. It was, it was more than a headache.
Okay.
So, pretty much that's why I'm using the main structure right there that goes all the way to the highway. It's just easier, easier for me to turn and just go around. Uh, I mean, as far as the shop, I mean, I'm just doing it cuz I like to do welding and stuff on the side.
So Chris, does it change things that he pulled a residential permit and now he's saying he's doing a shop?
Okay, well, he hasn't pulled any permits.
But not permit, but, but for the variance.
So the application states single-family, the subdivision application states single-family residential use. So, becau- if it's like, okay, he lives, that Mr. Billiat lives on lot two A, right? And he's got his, his home and then he's got some accessory buildings. All of that's residential use. And if he's building this shop on the adjacent property that he owns and it's for his personal use, whether it's welding or storage or whatever it might be, that still falls under residential use cuz he lives right there. Now, if he puts a welding shop there and then puts a sign up at the highway saying Billiat's welding, well then now all of a sudden that's become commercial. So then I go back to what I was saying earlier that engineering's approval was based on a residential use.
That's why I was-
So if it's for his personal welding shop for his himself, that's one thing. But if it's a commercial business, then, you know, we have to go back to-
So I just wanted you to hear that.
Engineering approval would have to, have, he'd have to resubmit, or, well, not resubmit the whole application, but, you know, if, if that's his intent is to operate a commercial welding business that you would have customers, I mean, that, you know, commercial, for profit, um, then I would have to say, I think we would need to, you know, table this thing so that engineering could take another review of the drainage calc's for commercial, not residential.
Yeah, cuz I mean, that's all I'm trying to use. I mean, I wanted to do all this other stuff, but it's just too much of a can of worms with this trailer park. And then like Mr. Ron, Mr. Ronnie in the back said, it's, the sewer would drain on his stuff and really I don't want that.
Sure.
I mean, that's just too much stuff to deal with.
So is your vision to do it for yourself in personal use or is your vision to have a commercial building with a sign in the front and get customers?
No, I wasn't gonna do no sign or nothing. I mean, a lot of times all my family and stuff down the bay and all that stuff, they call me and I, I go to their house. I mean, I do a lot of welding on the skimmer frames, I can tell you that, a lot. But that's just my little machine. I go to my uncle's house and all that stuff. I mean, I was gonna use it for storage and stuff like that, have some stor- have a storage buildings and stuff like that. But as far as like, commercial-
So, storage buildings for yourself or for, you wanna rent them out?
Uh, I mean, maybe later on down the line. I mean, I might. But right now, it's my personal use. I mean, but I don't, you talking some serious dollar. That's why if I was to ever do that, you talking about years down the line possibly.
All right, Mr. McGuire?
Real quick, Mr. Billiat, I, I do hear what you're saying, but it's about being, I guess, upfront and honest with not just us that's here, but everyone that's sitting in, in this audience.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify about this trailer park and all this stuff.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not hearing a lot of clarification though, okay? Because you, you're going back and forth. So I, I would hope that you're able to be as honest as you possibly can-
Yeah.
With this entire commission-
Yeah, cuz y'all run the game. Basically, y'all run the ballgame, basically.
But, not, not, not about that. It's just simply about if you say you're gonna do one thing, sticking with that. Because even if you don't put a sign out as far as commercial welding, you still have, you can still run a whole lot of traffic through there.
Yeah.
And you're talking about infringing on your neighbors with their property and all. So, whatever you say you're gonna do, being able to stick with that.
Okay.
And that's hoping, that's hopefully what we can actually get to tonight.
Well, that's what I'm trying to learn, all what I can do with my property. Um, I've been, I mean, everything was kinda like thrown in the air on a lot of stuff.
You need to find that before you come, you know, asking for a variance on stuff. You, you really need to figure out what you wanna do with it. Um, first, and then maybe come back to us with like a solid, a solid plan.
I mean, I'll be straight up and honest with you, all jokes aside. I mean, the ballgame, I'm gonna tell you straight up, what I'm, I really want to do. My vision of what I would love to do with my property is basically turn around, have my welding shop, cuz that's what I like doing. I like welding. In the front, I wanted, I was thinking about putting some mini storages in the front. I mean, I'm gonna be straight up and honest with you. I mean, I was thinking about doing some mini storages.
Uh, Mr. McGuire?
But I don't know, is that a good thing or a bad thing? That's why I wanted to do the trailer park, but it's just a big can of worms. I figured if I turn around and maybe possibly do some mini storages or something like that, I can help out the community with having a place to store their stuff up the bayou and stuff like that. You can make a couple of dollars on it. The parish makes money, you know how it works. I mean, everybody makes money on it. Plus, it helps out the community. Plus, I can have fun with my welding by building me a little shop.
Okay, let me, uh, Mr. Rogers.
Okay, I, I just wanna tag along to what Mr. McGuire said. Now you talking mini storage. You just went into commercial. And, and, and like you said, you don't need a sign to, to broadcast that you're doing commercial welding. So I think our only opportunity at this point is to table it and go back to engineering for revised calculations and so forth.
I mean, cuz am I allowed to do mini storages? I, I just wanna say, I'm, it's a learning process. I'm learning.
Okay.
Well, let's go to staff first and then I'll see if you wanna do a motion for Mr. Rogers. What, was it? Okay.
So, right now, the stated use on the application is single-family residential. So if your intent is to do mini storage, then we would need to amend the application to reflect commercial. I mean, you could have single-family and commercial listed on there. You could have multiple uses. I mean, it's not zoned. But we need to know what the proposed land use is because as I stated earlier, the standards for development for residential and commercial vary. So we need to know. So if, if you wanna do mini storage, then we would need to revise the app, table this thing so we can revise the application. And Joan would have to do another review of the engineering and that's pretty much, I think, all it would need to-
Can I show y'all a picture of what I'm trying to do?
No, I, I think we, we gotta move forward cuz we got a lot going on tonight. So, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move, uh, to table it pending, you know, with a revised application. Sure.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Thibodeau and Mr. Smith?
I just wanna say, it's, it's not, um, it's not our responsibility to tell you what's allowed. It's your property. You can do whatever you wanna do.
But I don't wanna, you know, mess with the neighbors, you know, I'm trying to keep cool with everybody.
Understood. We're talking about transparency here. So you can do whatever you wanna do with your property. It's yours. So I just wanna clarify that for him. So you, like, you, you don't have to come to planning and zoning to ask what can you do with your property. It's about what you wanna do and following the proper procedures to do that.
And that's what I'm trying to do. I'm actually just trying to, I mean-
I think, I think we got it, bud.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and vote now. We have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Thibodeau. All approve, aye? All oppose, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you, brother.
Yeah, so motion passes on what he said. So it's just, it's postponed a month.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll turn around, I'll get some uh, paperwork and some drawings. Maybe that might help the situation on what I'm trying to do.
Yes, sir.
But it definitely ain't gonna be no trailer park.
Yeah, I would, I would reach out to uh, parish engineering and, and either you or Mr. Ken would need to get with them and figure out what, what kind of information they're gonna need.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Derrick, go ahead.
If you wanna just do like we normally do and let everyone know if they wanna leave, that we're here for that item, cuz it was, it seems like there was about six or eight people.
Yeah, if we have a crowd that was here for that item, y'all can go ahead and leave now. Uh, we'll be here till about eleven. If y'all wanna swing back by and bring some pizza, it'd be great. All right.
Nobody gets trapped.
If y'all can move that conversation to the hall, that way we'll, we'll uh-
But not out there. You don't wanna get trapped. It's back there. You need to make sure you exit this door.
If everybody wants to move quickly, thank y'all. That's okay. Thank y'all. Okay. H two, division of property belonging to absolute property investments? Yes, ma'am.
Alisa Champagne with Charles McDonald Land Surveyors, three six nine seven West Main Street. Uh, what we have here is a minor subdivision- Uh, what we have here is a minor subdivision, um, creating three lots of record fronting on West Main Street. Um, as you can see from the map, they they are, they they're not, they need to install a fire hydrant. We show a proposed fire hydrant on there. Uh, the developer has paid for the fire hydrant and signed her application with Waterworks. Um, was supposed to be done last week, but anyway, it's not done, but anyway, it's coming. Uh, so, um, we haven't received all the utility letters. Um, so we're just asking for a conditional approval upon the installation of the fire hydrant and whatever punch list, um. Chris has.
Alright, we will take, uh, open to the public, one time public on this matter, two times public on this matter, three times public. Motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Miss Angel, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a proposed minor subdivision to create three lots for single family residential use. The lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards for development, except for the distance from the nearest hydrant. The applicant is in the process of installing a new hydrant as per the plans. And we do have a receipt from Waterworks for the down payment on the hydrant. And Bayou Kane has issued a letter stating that they agree with the division provided the hydrant is placed as shown on the plans. So staff is comfortable with this being a conditional approval item. Other conditional approval items are listed in the recommendation, which is approval on the following conditions. Submittal of confirmation of fire hydrant placement per plans and by UKAN requirement. Submittal of all utility service letters, method of sewage disposal be depicted on the plat. And location and description of at least one permanent type benchmark be depicted on the plat.
Thank you, administration. Alright, motion or comments or in motion, please. Motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Miss Angel, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you.
H three, the cottages at Cypress Ridge, phase A through D. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Good evening, Gene Milford with Milford and Associates at fifteen thirty-eight Oak Street. Uh, representing a developer for, uh, prime land, uh, development. This is a, uh, single family residential subdivision. Uh, to be extended up in the gray area. This is back behind Tractor Supply. Um, whereas you get, uh, the Burger King and Tractor Supply and the bank right there is Executive Drive. This will be the extension of that and following to the north and then running along the, uh, the the two tracks that run. Uh, back toward, uh, San Luis Bayou in the back. Um, this is a residential plan unit development. Um, we've laid it out and I believe we complied with all the requirements of the conceptual preliminary.
Okay. Uh, open it to the public, go on once on this, yes, ma'am. Come, come here and, uh, sorry, come up and state your name and your address.
My name is Cezanne LaBuff. I live at two eighty-three Bayou Blue Bypass Road in Gray, Louisiana.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have the, I own the property with my family are journeying the north side of the boundary for the. Cottage ridge thing, so I have some concerns. The area that the cottage is going to be part of. Is, um, a forty, forty year old plus forest. Covering about two hundred and fifty acres with numerous owners. The rear of the forest is in flood zone C, abutting the Saint Louis Canal. And this area in zone C. Has the characteristics of a wetlands habitat. My question is. What is the plan for relocating animals and fowl? That are dislodged because of the clearing of the forest in the construction zone? And where is the planned relocation site?
Okay, well, uh, is is that all you have?
I have some more, please.
Okay, ask all your questions and then we'll let him get up. Uh, I'm not sure how many answers he'll have for that, but we'll try.
Okay, thank you. And I want to know if arrangements have been scheduled with the Louisiana Wildlife and Fisheries. To inspect the woodlands for alligator turtles, which are on the endangered species list. The zone C habitat abutting the Saint Louis Canal. Is a prime habitat for the alligator turtles. And then my third question is what is the philosophy of the landowner? Regarding the trees and the shrubs that are growing along.
Oh, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry, the mic, the mic shuts off. Yeah, we'll, we'll let you go finish that last sentence, please.
And I would like to know what he plans to do about the shrubs. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir. Will you wanna come up and try to, uh, do you have any of those answers for her?
Would you like for me to wait until?
Well, I don't know if you want to.
Their questions?
Uh, did you get, I don't know if you wrote them down or I want to make sure we, uh.
I've written some of them down, yes.
Okay, I will take them one at a time. Yeah, if you can answer all of hers.
Um, as as far as the habitat, uh, there's, there's no. Requirements that I know of to, uh, see to the relocation of of birds and snakes and. Other items. Um, as far as anything, if we're along the canal back. Um, uh, we'll address that as we get to that point if we, if we do that, because I do know there are some discussions. About seeing about if some of those trees could be left along the, uh, the back. Uh, that's gonna be something that we're gonna be looking into. Uh, if you'll notice on the conception preliminary, the the last of the remaining tracks, um. We have some space between there and the actual canal on the back, uh, which we're hoping possibly not to have to contend with.
Um, how big are these? These are, you said cottages, um.
Okay, on the, on the drawing, you'll see, uh, the two, a couple of the smallest of the lots. Uh, they range in forty foot, forty seven foot and fifty foot, generally speaking, in the in the lot widths. Most of the structures range from eleven hundred feet, fifteen hundred feet. They're, uh, two and three bedroom. Uh, multi bathroom homes, thick built. Um, so they show you how they clearly fit on the lot. As well as providing the two required to off-street parking, either in, uh, the garage or in the driveway or a combination thereof.
And this, this is gonna be sold as residential lots to individuals or what's?
These are single family residential lots.
Okay, alright.
Yes, and as I understand, there'll, there'll be an HOA.
Gotcha.
Involved in this. Um, I didn't mention earlier, we are working on, uh, we've already discussed with. Terbon Parish Plush Control, uh, to tie into the parish sewer. There's a force main that runs through the property along the CCC ditch. Uh, we've done other projects in the past where we, uh, connect to that sewer force main and be able to turn all the parish sewer. Uh, so it'd be community sewer, parish, uh, treated. Uh, this is carbon gutter subsurface drainage, so it'll be just like most any other.
Sure.
Residential subdivision that you see. Uh, one of the other questions that was asked about the trees and I did have the the pleasure of speaking with her prior to this meeting. Um. As with most all developments, it'll pretty much be clear cut. Um, the times that we've attempted to try and keep trees in a development, uh, never turned out well. Uh, the trees are always in the wrong place. Um, so pretty much all the trees on the property now that if you're out, can't cut trees down that are not on your property. Of course, so the trees that are on the property will be, uh, removed, cleared out to make room for the development.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rogers.
Uh, she made a comment about possible wetlands. Has a wetlands determination been made on the property?
To my knowledge, no. Um, right now, I'm still waiting for the surveying, uh, to be completed.
Okay, because I guess that would have to go through coastal zone.
Yes, if if that's what we find. Uh, but, uh, we'll point out that I did do a lot of work on the, right on the other side of the bayou. Uh, we didn't have that problem there.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Thibodeau.
Yes, sir. You, you mentioned community sewage?
Yes, sir.
Now, south of this is suburban estate, is that right?
South, uh, suburban estate, it says Linda Ance Street, yes.
Uh, uh, do we have parish sewage in that area? Last I knew, suburban estate had private sewage.
When the new aisle was developed, they ran sewer, they extended sewer line along Highway twenty-four, along West Park. It was like a two mile run from wherever it ended previously up to that new aisle site, so it came right across, right in front of this place.
Okay, so shit, I'm on, uh. I'm on the West Main side of going south, so I can cross the bayou and connect with that, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. I I I didn't know they had, uh, I didn't know that project had taken place. I'm sorry about that. So, uh, there's a line that comes from, uh, suburban estate is still on a private line, is that right?
Well, Linda Ance Street is still individual sewer.
Correct, they have a package.
They're correct. When Government Street was built, uh, by the Public Works Department, the the Juvenile Justice.
Right.
There's a sewer lift station there, I believe. They call it the Valentine Station. Uh, there's a force main from there that comes down along the CCC ditch, goes underneath Highway ninety. And if I recall correctly, goes all the way down to the Darlene Station.
Okay.
Or the Oakshire Holding Basin. I don't remember which off the top of my head. Yeah, the discussions we've had with Plush Control is that we would intercept that force main. Create a new lift station at that location. The stuff from the north would come down and to that lift station and then the new lift station would pick it up. And reuse the, the, the force main to continue on. It's a twelve inch force main that runs through there.
What, what, uh, have we done any study on the impact on the Linda Anne subdivision? Uh, uh, do we know whether there's anything with regards to drainage and and, you know, they always complain about the north side. Many of the residents, uh, when I was council, uh, complained, the no, the ones that. That were living on the north side of Linda Anne, the even number side, I believe, maybe the odd number side, but they always complained about. Little water issues in the rear of their homes, so.
I used to live in Linda Anne. I used to live in Linda Anne. I'm familiar with it.
Okay, so.
Uh, we did find some obstructions to the drainage in the area. We've reported that to the parish.
Okay.
And there's been several debris dropped in front of the culverts and things like that. Kind of blocked things up. Hopefully those will be addressed. The CCC ditch used to go all the way up to Mobile Estates.
Right.
And most of that's been cut off, so there's a lot less water that comes down the CCC ditch than did many years ago.
Okay, well, uh.
I didn't know that because I remember when Fred LeBuff had a, uh, flooding problem, we, we, we depended on the CCC ditch.
Yes, sir.
That's different. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. We're gonna go ahead and open it back up to the public.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to respond back to Mr. Thibodeau, uh, I don't have all the details and Joan's not here. But I do know that, uh, Public Works and Parish Administration have been in communications with the owner. Of the parcel just north of the Linda Anne. Um, those lots on the north side of Linda Anne about a drainage servitude to improve some of that. Rear lot drainage issues that they're having, but I don't have all the information.
Give me an update as we get.
Sure.
Uh, public, again on this matter, next.
I have a couple of questions.
Uh, first, name, name and address.
Wallace Thibodeau Estates, uh, three, two, two, one, Matilda Marie Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Um, my lot actually is on the, the eastern corner. Across the bayou from where this subdivision is gonna stop. One of the questions I have is. That's that area that's not gonna be used for the neighborhood. Will it be sold to someone with no restriction that can build anything and do anything with that property? Uh, in the future. Uh, second question is. Uh, that neighborhood looks a lot like some of our other neighborhoods in the community that, uh. Three, four years from now, there's gonna be another leg of it going with another street. And that street would line up perfectly with Wallace Thibodeau Dead End Street. That could have a bridge right there. So my question is, is there ever gonna be allowed a bridge? From that neighborhood to Wallace Thibodeau Estates?
Okay.
And then the next is, um, concerning the sewage. Uh, we have some neighborhoods close to Wallace Thibodeau that have these big tanks. At the end of the neighborhood that treat it and dump it into the bayou. Well. Uh, I have a friend that lives near one of those and it stinks terribly. So my question is, since you don't have an answer to where that treat or what type of treatment you're gonna do yet. Uh, what kind of guarantee do we have that we're not gonna have a treatment plant dumping sewage and smelling up our neighborhood?
Okay, yes, sir.
I still got time here.
Yep.
Um, concerning the, um, the wetlands, I like the idea of that whole property. E- even if they do add another street to the south. Uh, leaving that all trees to where there's no, there's a buffer there.
Agree.
Um, I know he has the right to do with his property what he wants to do, but. Um, we just kinda trying to protect our, our property as well.
Amen. I'm sorry?
Um. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Remind the commissioners when people are talking, let's make sure we're respectful and let them say their piece. Uh, next, please. Oh, Gene, Mr. Gene, if you could come up and, uh, respond, please.
Uh, Gene Milford again.
Oh, uh, you could give him, uh, thank you.
Gene Milford again, um. Like, the, right now, the, the, the large tracks, I don't believe we have any. Any specific plans for them right now. That's the remaining property that goes all the way to the back. That's part of the, the purchase. Uh, right now, the development is intended for two hundred and seventeen total lots and that's the remaining track. Um, I'm sure they'll, somebody might do something with them in the future, but I'm not sure yet. Uh, as far as a bridge to Wallace Thibodeau, uh, that. Would be whoever purchases and possibly develops. Any other property if that happens and that would. Be it a future, future, future decision. Um, I'm not sure how that would go into place. As I mentioned before, our intention right now is for community sewer. Uh, and sending the sewer to Terbon Parish Consolidated Government, uh, for treatment at the North Treatment Plant. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, the tree buffer, potential tree buffer along the canal. That's something that the owner has been made aware of and is gonna be continuing to look at and possibly consider.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, go ahead, sorry.
The question was, what was gonna be done with the end of the street? He had, he had a que- I think.
Technically, there'll be two lots.
Okay.
Um, because right now they already have a lot line dividing through it, uh, and it'll be the remaining track.
Probably two big lots.
Two big lots, yeah, two, uh, uh, as, as if you look very closely at the conceptual and preliminary plan, if you go through it, especially in phase B. You start taking a look at it, uh, you know, we talked about there's fifty four lots, but if you actually count them up, you'll find fifty six lots. And part of that reason is there is because we, at, at the time, we weren't exact, we're still not a hundred percent sure where the CCC ditch is and. Its exact angle as it cuts across, we do know we're gonna have to widen the CCC ditch to provide some drainage. So we left that and the intention is we'll basically consume two of those lots on either side, whichever direction it works out. To try and, you know, for our drainage. So at the end, you'll still have fifty four when phase B comes along. But for the, for, for this drawing, that's what you'll see, and so that's why you have the two lots at the back. As that moves, so shall the end of the street move a little bit. Those tracks will change size.
So what is drainage on all of this? Is everything going to, um, the canal in the back? Is it all, everything going towards the back?
In phase A and part of phase B. That's be the section between Highway twenty-four and the CCC ditch, it'll be into the CCC ditch. For the remainder of phase B, C, and D, which will go to the back, that will be going back toward, uh, the canal on the back. The drainage that does go to the CCC ditch comes just south of, um, Lynda Ann, and then goes to the back canal anyway.
That's gonna be a big load on drainage in that area for sure.
That's why we're looking at, we're, we're gonna be working on widening that part of the CCC ditch to provide that mitigation through there. And that will be coming when we get to engineering phase.
Yeah, that's gonna be a, that's low in that area. Okay, um, I think you answered most of, uh, Mr. Leverance's questions. Uh, wait, let me let you come back one more time, just to follow up real quick, then the next person will come up?
Just to follow up, uh, what would be the restriction on those two lots in the back?
There, there, there will be none. So, so he's coming only for the first part in front of us. So we don't, we don't have the plans for the second.
So we have no guarantee that there's gonna be a commercial, something going on there, or a dump, or, uh?
Correct. Yeah, that's not in front of us tonight, just the first section is. Yes, sir. Once again, uh, name and address, sir.
My name is Rick Hernandez. I live on, uh, Matilda Marie and Wallace Thibodeau Estates. I think the concern was from the onset, when this development came up and I received this letter, was the point that we just made about the drainage. If you are to go back there right now, which is directly behind my house, is, uh, Bayou St. Louis, is full. The pumps cannot keep up. If you start bringing in drainage, we talking about all the water that's gonna drain from this subdivision that's being developed into this ditch, you're gonna compound the problem. And you don't have pumps big enough to actually take care of this problem. Because what's happening is you're creating a bigger problem. We already have a problem with drainage in that area. The back of the subdivision, the phase three of this subdivision was underwater for a while in, in, in first stages of development. So a ditch had to be dug on Bayou Blue, surrounded the subdivision, and meeting up with this canal to alleviate that part of the subdivision. So now you're gonna bring a subdivision behind us, which is, the bayou's not that wide. You're talking about thirty feet at the most? And then you're talking about running water into this bayou and filling it up. When it rains, all this rain, we really hadn't had that much rain, maybe three inches of rain, four inches of rain, and this bayou's full. So, you guys need to look at this closely and, and, uh, perhaps rethink this whole situation with the drainage. I mean, you're talking about, I don't know how many residences, uh, you're talking about four hundred res- residences?
Two seven, two seventeen, I think it is.
Two hundred and seventeen, that's a lot in a little space. So you're talking about sewage, drainage? And then we were asking, uh, the bourgeois's were asking for a buffer zone, because it's, it's a lot of noise. You know, we get noise from the highway already because they cut down all the trees along the bayou side, on the other side, to accommodate the the residences with the fact that these trees won't fall across the bayou and, 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 uh, impede the drainage of this area, because that's what was happening. So now, you know, we're looking at this problem, so if you can help us out and, and, and perhaps look at this again.
Yeah, and like I said, there's gonna be engineers involved, but, you know, I agree with you to eye test, as there's already some issues there, um, just to eye test. Um, but we'll give everybody a chance. Do you wanna respond to him real quick, and then we'll, we'll keep moving forward?
Thanks. Gene Milford again. Um, yeah, there, there was some, uh, issues in Wallace Thibodeau for a while, and a, and a larger ditch was dug along Bayou Blue, along the north side of Highway ninety, coming from Highway three sixteen back to the canal. Uh, at the time, it was thought that, that possibly the, that canal, that, that drainage ditch was just undersized. Uh, going back through, what we found was, and you can go back to the parish records, one of the commercial properties that was downstream of Wallace Thibodeau, and the culvert that was in Bayou Blue itself, uh, was full of concrete. It was a forty-eight inch culvert, if I recall correctly, and a little over two-thirds of it was completely filled with concrete. Uh, the parish went and, and had that culvert removed and restored with a new culvert, and to my knowledge, they have not had a problem, or certainly not the problems that they had before. Uh, and that did resolve the issues that was causing some streetwide flooding in the front part of Wallace Thibodeau.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Engineering will be, we will be having lots of discussions at the engineering stage.
Yes, sir. Okay, next up, uh, on this matter, anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
Katie Boujwa, three, two, two, one, Matilda Marie Drive, Gray, Louisiana. Um, I live along the bayou, like my husband said. And our lot is the end of his development, and then we have the next lot right behind it. And then the next lot is our home. So our home, then we have an empty lot right here, and then the development is right across the bayou from us.
Yes, ma'am.
We are concerned that it's gonna bring down the property value of the residences in, um, Wallace Thibodeau Estates. I've spoken with a number of neighbors that are concerned about that. And the reason that people bought back there was because of the woods and the privacy in our backyards. And if these trees are cut down, we're gonna lose that. Now, um, if they owned this property, they have the right to cut it down, but they also have the considering the people that live in Wallace Thibodeau, they have the choice also to leave a buffer of trees, so that when we go in our backyards, we won't be having to see these neighborhoods behind us. And those people in those neighborhoods won't see what we have in our yards also. So I want them to consider what would they want neighbors to do if they were building a property, a neighborhood behind them, would they want to lose their privacy because of a neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this matter? Going once, public? Going twice, public? I don't know if you still have time. Becky, do you still have a minute left? You could run back up real quick. You got about a minute left.
Okay, they were talking about the, um, Rick was talking about the drainage. Today, with the little bit of rain that we had, our bottom deck of the bayou was covered, maybe a foot above the bottom deck. We've had rain back there where our top deck, you have to walk up, I think, five steps to get to the top deck, and that has been covered. We've had rain come way into our yard where that has been. So if the, if the drainage is not right, it's not gonna be good for the people in that canal.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All going once, public? Going twice, public? Three times, public? Motion by Mr. Smith, second, second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a conceptual and preliminary phase approval of a major subdivision, process C for a proposed two hundred and seventeen lot, single-family residential plan unit development to be developed in four phases. The lot configuration and layout meet PUD standards for development as set forth in Section twenty-four, seven, twenty-four point seven point one point four of the parish code. Applicant has provided the necessary lot layout configuration examples that depict sufficient recreational area parking and setbacks for the various lot sizes. The block lengths are less than the fifteen hundred foot maximum, and proposed street names for Willow's End Drive, Shadow Oak Drive, Rustling Oaks Drive, and Majestic Oak Drive have been listed and approved by Parish nine-one-one addressing. The nine-one-one approved names will be listed on the plat at the engineering phase. Drainage plans are provided at engineering phase, although parish engineering has indicated that the developer may need to reduce the lot count in order to provide for the necessary water detention. The plat indicates that the average daily trips for the subdivision will be over one thousand, per the subdivision regulation formula of ten point zero six average daily trips per lot. The total average daily trips at full buildout will be two thousand one hundred and eighty-three point zero two. Since the existing executive drive ingress egress is onto West Park, Louisiana Highway twenty-four, a copy of the proposed plat was sent to DOTD by staff, and we expect to have comments as part of the engineering phase. Staff did receive calls requesting more information. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, Commissioner comments, questions, or a, some type of motion?
Motion to approve for staff recommendation. Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Si, Mr. Billiot, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
Thank you.
And we'll give a minute. Not a lot of y'all were here for that, so if y'all would like to leave, we'll, uh, wait a minute before we move on. Derek, you, uh, had a comment?
No, you, you'd be to it.
Oh.
You, you still gave him a minute.
I could be attorney too, if you want me to.
Yeah, feel free. We're always looking.
Jay, uh, administrative approval. Oh, did I skip, huh? I just looked. Staff report, I'm sorry.
Well, isn't that the public hearing? Oh, okay. Uh, no staff report.
All right, administrative approvals? A motion by Mr. Rogers? Second by Ms. Angel, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Committee report?
So the, uh, subdivision regulation review committee, they had their last meeting on Thursday of last week to, uh, discuss, uh, the proposed RV park regulations, a draft of those. Well, first, a draft of those was, um, included as backup in the, uh, agenda that was listed, uh, for the review committee meeting, and then, uh, we did make a couple of minor edits to that, and that draft was uploaded as backup material as part of the public notice and agenda for tonight's meeting. So, um, and that was sent around to everybody. Um, so I will turn it over to the subdivision regulation review committee members to, uh, well, Barry's not here, but, um, to, uh, kind of give a wrap-up of what they had discussed and any comments that they'd like to add present to you guys.
We did hear from.
Uh, hold on.
Yeah.
And pull your, there you go. At each time that we met, um, we heard from, um, parish citizens who had interest, uh, in, uh, in this motion, uh, and ordinance, and we were able to get, uh, competing sides, I think. Um, and I think that, uh, no matter what regulations we pass, there's going to, uh, not everyone is going to be, uh, happy with it. Um, but I do, uh, I would like to hear if there is some, um, some comments from the commissioners after having read the recommendations that the committee, um, has put forth. Mr. Thibodeau?
I, I got a lot of questions, yeah, and I guess everybody did receive Ms. April Trahan's, uh, letter from the Fundeburken Duval firm, too. I did have a chance, and I did, I was not in attendance at the last regular meeting, but I did receive Mr. Milford's, uh, comments and questions about what we were proposing to do, and actually, uh, right off the bat, when I saw the sort of preamble of whatever staff had written about Act twelve, uh, I was in the two thousand and five extraordinary legislative session. I, I don't know that, that what you referenced in that act is relevant to what you state in this, uh, in this draft document here, as far as your reference to FEMA and the flood plane and that kind of stuff. So, I'mma just be honest with you all. I have a lot of questions about this, and, and I, I, I wasn't at the regi, uh, subdivision review committee, so I didn't offer any comments, but I, you know, I'm not sure this instrument is ready to be put in the public domain, or in an ordinance form, or sent to the council after public hearing. At this point, I, I'd like to have us have some more input on it, uh, and, and, and see whether or not, you know, I, I, I looked at, Ms. Trahan sent us Orleans, Jefferson, Assumption, Ascension, East Feliciano, and LaFush Parish is, uh, uh, RV and campground regulations. All of them are, are, were a lot shorter than the proposal we have, eight or nine or ten pages that we have, and, and, and some of it, some of our language in here, y- you know, for instance, we're gonna, we're gonna make somebody who's grandfathered in, who's non-conforming, we're gonna give them twelve months to pay for these regulations that we're just now developing. To me, that's onerous and burdensome. I, I, I mean, they're grandfathered in, and they're in, unless they cease to exist, uh, at some point, whether that's six months or a year ceasing to exist, then if somebody wants to pick up on that part, then they can, they'll have to conform, conform to what we were proposing at this point. But to ask an owner of an RV or campground, I'mma give you twelve months, you gotta pay to conform with what we're passing tonight, to me, that's unfair. That, that's not, I mean, they develop, and, and what they did was legal when they develop it, they don't have to pay to go back to conform with what we have now. Anything new going forward, yes, but the guy that's in business now, he, he oughtn't to, he oughtn't to make him comply in twelve months. He gotta spend this money to meet all these regulations that we're proposing to do. So, you know, that's just one thing I'm throwing out. I mean, we could, we could, we could, I guess we could use examples of subdivisions that, that maybe some houses are not conforming. Do we give them twelve months to, to do some approvals on the house to be conforming, or, you know, it just, it just seems to me.
I hear what you're saying. Um, if I may, uh, the, yeah, what we're talking about is section, or what Mr. Wayne's talking about is in Section seventeen dash ten, subsection B, and how many, it's called Romanet six?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm getting there. Romanet six.
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, that's typo, right? January first, twenty fifteen, that's leftover, 'cause these ordinances were originally drafted in twenty fourteen, y'all. Yeah, eleven years we've been noodling around with this. Um, the other thing that I think, um, to clarify, um, if you're grandfathered in, you're grandfathered in, and as long as you continue to operate, you can stay grandfathered in in whatever format or whatever you're in, but if you shut down, discontinue for a period of twelve months or more, and then you reopen, so you close the RV park down and everybody, all the RVs are gone, and it just sits there as vacant land, and you wanna reopen an RV park on the same piece of property, okay, well, that new RV park would have to follow the new standards. We're not requiring people to go back and give them, okay, guys, you got a year to do all the, to, to dress it up and do all these new things. No, we're not saying that.
Okay.
But that is a good catch you had on the typo. We definitely have to change that.
And, and let me, let me ask you, and I got this thing all marked up, but, but let me see, which one is that, seventeen, and maybe you can help me get that quicker, Chris, where we, uh, give administration, planning administration, authority to shut a park down if, if, if they're non-compliant. And I didn't real, I didn't read anything where they have an appeal process in that instance, where we, we, we stopped them from doing business because we determined that they in violations of some of the rules, or maybe they got potholes, whatever we shut them down for. I, I, I was just wondering that, that component, do we have it? We didn't, that, we didn't cite in here that there's a, an opportunity for them to appeal.
Yeah, I think in Section seventeen dash twelve, which is the appeals section, it does look like everything sort of focused on appeals from the decisions by the planning commission.
Right.
So I think we could add a subsection F that would be, you know, appeals on decisions rendered by administration, uh, yeah, staff, administration, right?
Yeah.
I guess would those appeals go to you guys? I mean, we're enforcing the ordinance, uh, the ordinance and the, you know, so, yeah, I guess we would. that's, I guess that would be fair, right? And then if if they wanna appeal that further, if they're still not happy with the planning commission's ri- decision rendered, then that that appeal will go to the council, right?
And 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 then, yeah, I I guess the commission would would be the jurors, I guess. I I mean, I don't really know legal. She has opinion on that. Who would be the arbiters in that case?
Uh, sorry, I'm just making.
I was making the revisions that we had just said. Um yeah, I agree that if administration um that there's a, if there's an appeal from administration, it should come here first and if someone wants to appeal that, it would go to council. Just like how uh normally people come to the planning commission or zoning commission like we had few months ago with the imperial terrorist situation and if they wanna appeal the decision by this board, then they would go to council. So I think that would be the right process.
I, there's a, there's a a small camp uh RV park in Gibson on 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 uh, I guess it's on the main, on high side, if you live in Gibson, that's how to refer to it. Man opened it up back in uh probably the late nineties or so. I think he can accommodate four or five travel trailers or or RVs and and I noticed we set the limit here in a case like that. More than three, then you gotta, you gotta comply with all this stuff and and you know, we don't have zoning in Gibson, we don't have zoning in Dulack and a lot of other rural areas and I don't know, I I I just think, I just think we're not, we're not there yet with this, so you know, I that's just my comment. I I could go on, I'll stop.
Hold on, Mr. Thibodeau finish first. Mr. Thibodeau, you done?
I'm done.
Alright, Mr. Bill Yacht?
So my question is um whether, I I know that Mr. Thibodeau has uh stated on numerous times that he doesn't think the document is uh is ready to go to ordinance. He also indicated that he would like to uh have time to have more input, but did not make a motion to uh to table this discussion for uh next or the following. Uh so is that the intention of the commissioner?
Yeah, I guess ultimately, uh if you ask me, I was hoping to hear from more folks say something about this, but yeah, and
Wait, sorry. Oh, alright, so um hold on, Mr. Thibodeau.
So I kinda wanted to address the uh the limit. So we looked at the limit um to kind of trigger something to happen. So I think we have like a minor subdivision for a mobile home park and a major. And if you have under five, this happens, and if you have over five, this happens. Well, I think the intent is to make sure that we trigger to know that this is a RV park. It's it's not so much like the conforming to uh any of the policies. Right now, we have no way of knowing. Um so that's why the number was set so low. I think uh if a person does want to get into that business, we need some type of trigger to allow the parish to see that it's a, it's a business.
And and I'll I'll tell you this, I own an RV park and I'mma tell you, three's a good number because three really separates with people bringing their families in and um and and friends and so forth to someone actually running a business. Three, I think, is the appropriate number in this situation. Mister, back to Mister, oh, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
Nah, I I was just talking to Mr. Bill Yacht. I think we're just having a discussion now before we uh make a motion. I didn't know if anybody had offered a motion, but I think we were just having some discussion.
If if I can jump in, um we might as well, I think there's a lot of people here that have to speak on it. We might as well, I think, let them speak before we make a motion on it, so that we at least get their input. And also yeah, and there's a public hearing today. Also, a a few things I just wanted to address. We certainly can't table it and I mean, I don't have any input on what the best idea for this is. I- if y'all also have revisions you would like to make on the spot and then introduce it, that is also welcome, whatever the commission would like to do. Uh also, Mr. Thibodeau mentioned Ms. Trahan's ordinances that she provided. They're a lot shorter because they're just snippets of sections that she was comparing to ours. That's why it's so much shorter.
Alright, Mr. Smith, anything else?
Nope.
You good? Alright, we will open it to the public, being no other commissioner comments. Um would someone like to come up on this matter from the public? Yes, sir. Once again, it'll be name and address.
Good evening, uh Kevin Belonge, three-two-three Berg. Uh I too own a facility down Montague and I got wind of this today. I had this, I started looking at it. I'm I'm kind of for regulations. Uh I I think it's a good thing we have some uh way to clean up some of the the ugliness that some of these things can cause. I I'm I'm totally in favor with that. I I just had a couple of ideas, you know, we we, I was concerned about one, the date that was misrepresented in the uh document. That was a big issue to me. Because that creates a big problem. Cuz I've been kind of expanding as for the last five years, as I get time, I go do it myself. I'm probably three quarters of the way. And I was concerned that if I continued to expand, would that put me in nonconformance compliance? I think I heard tonight that that wouldn't be the case. If you're approved, you're moving forward, that would be, I'm happy to hear that. The other thing is if you look at the 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 area where we would have like a um uh a mulch area uh the s- the subdivision regulations would say that you have three square feet per linear foot of frontage. I particularly have about two hundred squ- linear feet, so that creates a six hundred square footage f- of mulch area that I would have to create. My lots are eighty feet wide, that I presume. That's a hundred and uh sixty feet. I have a road that's thirty, so I have basically a hundred ninety feet of frontage used on the two hundred. To put six hundred square fo- feet of mulch would basically create an area fifty by, I think, uh almost ten, twelve feet. That's a huge amount of area for a mulch area in the front of my park. I I I don't even know how I would be able to do that. And 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 just reading into the, to the document, I I think it's worthy to continue to do and put these things in place. But I'm just thinking out loud, how are you gonna be able to achieve what you're trying to put on paper? That's good, that's overdone. You understand how big fifty by ten would be? That's a lot, basically. Maybe we should just reevaluate just a few of the things. I I personally would like to see it tabled. So I could have more time to look at it and make comments. Again, I'm for what you guys are trying to do. I think it's, whether it's two pages or ten pages, it 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 matters not to me. I think we ought to try to you know, beautify our parish and uh you know, bring some sustain, some sustainability to these uh entities. You you just don't wanna throw up pipes and sewage pipes and and have people pull campers onto a spot. I that's, that's not what this is intended to do. Y'all trying to create in a sustainable fashion and I'm all for it. I would just like to ask to table it one more meeting. I'll take my time, look at it. And and again, if you pass it, I'm sure there will be a way to amend it moving forward. So thank you for your time.
So we can't table it, right?
Let me explain, I mean, this is a proposed regulation, so it's in a draft form. Its final version is not up to y'all. It's the parish council, just like with the rezone. Y'all are making a recommendation. We make a recommendation to you. Well, in this instance, it's the subdivision regulation review committee as well, but make a recommendation to you guys and then from there it goes to the council. So what we submit or what goes forward to the council by the time the council gets done with it and go- and it goes through that wash, it could come out the other end looking totally different. A- and so, you know, you could tonight, you could recommend approval as is, you could recommend um approval to to move it on to the council for consideration as amended. So if there's things that we're talking about tonight, you know, Derek's making some, you know, revisions to these things to include those comments. So that could be as amended. Yes, you could continue this or you could just flat out deny it. I mean, that, those are the standard recommendations, so. There there's, there's definitely more bites at this apple once it goes to the council, cuz the council's gonna have to have a public hearing as well, so.
Got it. Alright, Derek?
Uh to answer your question, yes, y'all can, like Chris and Chris laid it out perfectly. Y'all can table it to continue looking at it. Y'all can approve it as is or y'all can make revisions to recommend to the council in a different version or deny it. But yes, you still, once it gets to the council, there's still a lot of time and reasons for it to be revised. You know, you could get to the council and one of the council people could wanna revise half of the entire ordinance. And if they vote to do so, then they will. So I mean, it's just recommendation from this board to the parish council.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Bill Yacht?
Uh I was just gonna make note uh to Mr. Belonge or anybody else who's here. Hello, Mr. Belonge. Uh good to see you again. Um I just wanted to make note that as you heard uh Commissioner Thibodeau uh indicating that uh we had, the commissioners had uh documentation letters written to us on the subject. Anybody who's here for that, for this issue, if this does get continued, please be sure and write those and send those to us because we do read them, we do uh refer to them and uh it is something that we do uh that we do look at. So please, please uh feel free to do that as a means of uh public input.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, I I um it seems like the director is suggesting that we not work hard to try to perfect whatever we do here before we
I'm not saying that at all.
It seemed like he's trying to suggest that. I'd say that we work hard and try to get it right. I think the council one indirectly referred to that tonight. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we table the matter until the next regular meeting. And as Commissioner uh Bill Yacht just suggested and requested and asked, if you got some comments, send it to us. Put it in the public domain so we can have a look at it and 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 ultimately decide what we want to do with it uh to send to the council. So that's, that's what I, that's my motion, so.
Mr. Smith, go ahead, sorry.
What's your deadline for publishing the agenda and stuff? Like how far out in advance of the meeting? And what is the next meeting date anyway? Okay. So knowing that what I'm trying to do is see if we can back into a date where if we can get written comments from anybody. That way, we would have time to incorporate those into a draft so that we can advertise that revised draft online for the public. And then that way, you, we're all talking about the latest and greatest with incorporating, you know, comment, we could have it set up so any comments that we've received after tonight could be color-coded, you know, bold, underline or something like that, so you can easily distinguish what came in from the other folks. When, when do you think you'd need to have that deadline to publish?
The agenda has to be published by um August thirteenth at noon.
Maybe a special meeting.
When you publish the agenda, are you just publishing the agenda, not the backup material? Okay, so then, yeah. Okay, so that's not that deadline then. So the backup packet, when do you usually put that online, same time?
I would say no, because those meetings take place at three o'clock.
Let's uh, let's, let's focus back together right here. So alright, um Mr. Smith, you still got the mic?
I I wanted to mention uh the first gentleman that came up here, Mr. Bill Yacht. I think that's a perfect example of why I would like to see something happen, uh regardless if we revise it or not, because people come up here and they undersell what they're doing and we have no idea what they're doing and then we have no power to enforce what they're doing once it happens. So I'm uh, I do appreciate the diligence that is intended to go into this document. But I do wanna see the urgency as well. I'm not talking about something happening tonight, but I think we do have the urgency.
Something's better than nothing.
Collectively as a a commission to sit down and talk about the document.
I'm going to second Mr. uh Thibodeau's motion at this time.
Uh, okay. Okay, thank, Mrs. Smith, you good?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, um thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you coming and uh sharing your information with us. Um again, before we do make any type of decision, I, like I said, there's a lot of people here in the audience, we need to hear their comments. And we can, whatever you share with us, like, like uh Mr. Pulaski said, Mr. Berger is is actually taking all of the notes and and putting, putting stuff together so that we when the next document does come out, it's all already documented. So uh we we definitely need your comments to make this a better document. So thank y'all.
Yeah, the eighteenth is that Monday before the meeting. I mean, if if everybody could try and have us comments by then, that'll give us enough time to make the revisions to the document itself and then post it online and give sufficient time in advance of that meet, that twenty-first meeting date for people to read it and you know, digest it or whatever. And the eighteenth being a Monday, at least it gives people the weekend to mull it over too before.
Can you hit it again? I accidentally pressed it twice and then I'm coming to you next, sir. Uh go ahead, Derek.
Uh Mr. Rogers said what I was gonna state is that we do have it as a public hearing. So I think it would be a disservice to not allow the citizens to speak on it. Um that being said, Mr. Rogers was, said exactly what I was thinking, so he read my line.
Uh name and address, sir. Correct. That's why I'm going back to the public. We do have a motion in a second, but
But it's, the public hearing is still open.
Yeah, that's correct. We never closed it cuz we wanted, we wanted to hit from from the public, that's why I never closed it yet. That is correct. I was just gonna leave it open until we heard from Yeah, I mean, I gotta real dumb who's the motion and who's the second.
Yeah, Mr. Thibodeau, uh you do have a motion. I didn't, I didn't hear a second. Okay. I mean, would you, do you, are you opposed to continuing the public hearing? Okay, okay. But I, yeah, okay, so uh let's just continue the discussion, public hearing, and after which we have the motion, we have a second, we'll vote on that.
Got it. Yes, sir. Name and address.
My name is Renee Abar. Uh address is two fifty-four Water Plant Road. Me and Chris have talked about it, it's been a few day meetings and those guys have been putting effort to it and I do get the ta- hats off to them. I'm one that's always been for development. And when I say that, my engineering background is from Gulf South to Providence until construction road now. So I understand how all the system works. Couple of questions is the draft that we uh y'all putting out, you said for public to speak on. Will I be able to get a copy of this fairly easily or have to go to special meetings? How that's gonna work? Well, the reason, the update said the people that's gonna be uh in in putting on this to get the a version, so when I do go to the next meeting, I can see the latest and greatest, what people are thinking is one. That's one option. And number two, I know Mr. uh Go dismused himself earlier to the properties. You own RV park, you said? Are you gonna dismiss yourself on this kind of voting or how that works?
I own an RV park in Lake Charles. I don't think it has anything to do with here.
Okay, I'm just just wanna make sure we don't cross ties.
Yeah, it's just experience. It's nothing in this parish.
Okay. Now, one of the things I did talk with Chris about and I'm a, I'm pretty sure he said he would, with last meeting, we that we wouldn't probably put in in the um the draft, I don't know if it is or isn't, was if you have established subdivision set a buffer zone when it's not zone of a so many, a distance from the nearest property line, that would, this RV park don't pop up in the backyard. But if I understood correctly earlier, uh Mr. Trostler had put moratorium on, so nothing could happen until this is passed now? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll jump in. So just to be clear, that moratorium will be voted on um Yeah, thank you. I was thinking of the day in my head. On the thirtieth, that moratorium would put a halt on RV permits that are affected in this proposed ordinance, so that would be, you know, over three, which created
So that would be, you know, over three, which created an RV park, for ninety days or until the uh, the council is able to take action on this, so one or the other.
You said ninety days of what, from like to?
Ninety days from the thirtieth, or until the parish is able to vote on it, so whichever one.
So, a guy can't go get a permit tomorrow, is what you're telling me?
Well. He can, the moratorium.
That's, so he could.
The moratorium will not be voted on until July thirtieth. Yeah, so at that point, that is when the moratorium would start, if approved, obviously, that's on the thirtieth.
Right.
Yes.
And it would only be, the moratorium would only be applicable to?
Permits that apply in this, under these proposed ordinances.
A person getting one, two, or three RV permits for a single parcel would not be prohibited under that.
Yes, yeah, because one, two, and thr- so three RVs on one property does not create an RV park, which does not fall under these ordinances, as our ordinances are specifically for more than three, which is an RV park. So, someone can have three RVs on a lot and it'd still be allowed.
Correct.
Even after the moratorium. After the moratorium, if approved on the thirtieth, then the fourth RV, which was in our, under these ordinances would be the creation of an RV park, would be uh, moratorium would be on that, so that's halted.
Would it be grandfathered in, if he had four right now?
Someone already has four right now?
Yes.
Um, yeah, yeah, cause he already has the RV park.
If he's not a, by any standards or any means, I guess, or any zoning, if he just put four RVs on a piece of property, he can consider himself RV park as of today.
Chris?
Well, that person would still have to start with the Department of Health. I mean, right now, the pro- if, if anyone wanted to open an RV park, their first stop would be the Department of Health. And they will then go through and talk, work with them with respect to the size treatment plant they would need, if they need a service building, all of those kinds of state level, state agency types of things. And then from there, they would come to the parish to get permits, whether it's just a trade permit for uh, say the meters, or if it's, if they do have to build a service building, then they need permits for that. But really, once they get past the Department of Health, if they're not in the zoned areas, there's really not much um, from a regulatory standpoint at the parish end of things. That's what these proposed regulations would are intended to provide. So if somebody has an RV park already, and who has an RV park, well, I think we've basically had indicated that if they've got a occupational license, if it's on file with the sales tax department as an RV park, then that's how we know who has them. Um, that RV park is established and would be grandfathered in, it's not impacted by the moratorium. Um, nor is it uh, well, it would, it, they wouldn't have to shut down or anything like that. It's an operate, already operating RV park.
That's gonna be the way that, I mean, as of now, that we think is the cleanest way to determine RV parks that need to be grandfathered in. Not necessarily others four on that lot, but more as Chris said, if they have an occupational license, and then we can determine, okay, they were an RV park before, so they're grandfathered in. It's not like it'd be like, oh, someone just dropped a fourth one on, we can't touch it.
Got it. Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Mr. Gold.
So Chris, if someone is grandfathered in, and they wanted to expand their uh, RV park, would it be uh, expansion of a non-conforming, or would they have to follow the new rules?
They would have to follow the new rules, so that means that you would be locked, they would be locked in while that moratorium's in effect.
But if they wanted to expand an, an existing park as of now, late in the future, like.
It would just affect a new section, right?
Expanding, an ex- you, the grandfathered in applies to only as it is at the time that these ordinances were effect, made effective. That's how it's been done with the bon- with mobile home parks. Bon Villa is a good example, so on West Main. Um, they were grandfathered in, you know, under the previous mobile home park standards, and then in twenty sixteen, or twenty fourteen, new standards were passed. So when they expanded that mobile home park, they had to adhere, the new phase had to follow the new rules.
Correct. Okay, you good, Mr. Gold? Alright, anybody else from the public would like to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am, name and address.
Connie Bird, fifty-nine fifty-three Alma Street. Watching this government operators, oof. Yeah, I think people need to stop over-regulating everything we do. I understand we need regulations. But I'd like to see it keep, kept a little more simple, instead of all these complex. I would honestly, if I was coming in from out of town and wanted to start up anything in this parish, and had to see all the stuff that I had to go through to open something up in this parish, I'd be walking. I think we need to start calming down about all this stuff. I understand, look, I've lost my ass on properties in this parish. It's not e- not even excusing my French. I know what it's like to lose money in this parish with people developing stuff next to you that wasn't there, and then you take a chance and deal there, and next thing you know, your neighborhood goes to hell, and you stuck with a house you can't get rid of. So, I would like to see y'all just take a step back and breathe. Instead of over-regulating everything we do, I mean, how hard could it be to set up a trailer park? I know that you got sanitation, you got roads, you got spaces, and this, that, and the other, but don't make it any worse for the people who are trying to develop things. I mean, I'm not in favor of a trailer park every, every thirty feet either, or in the back of a, a nice subdivision. But it is their property, and if the people don't like what's going around their property, then they could either make them follow the, the rules or leave. Find another place to lea- to live, cause we not immune to everything. Things are gonna change around you. So be wise where you buy, and be wise what you do. So I would just like to see the regulations kinda toned down a little bit, because it, it's ridiculous. So just keep that in mind when you're typing up at least a hundred pages of documents that a s- a, a simple person has to read through and get a Philadelphia lawyer to explain it to them before they can even get started. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else from the public? Alright, gone once public, gone twice public, three times public.
Motion to close, I mean, motion to continue, right?
If you would like to continue the public hearing, which it does make a lot of sense, because we, we have a motion on the, you know, on the board right now to table it.
Table it.
Well, you wouldn't do a substitute motion to continue the public hearing?
What was?
To table it, but not to continue the public hearing.
Correct.
If you want to continue the public hearing, you'll need a substitute motion.
Yes.
Can you do both at the same time, or they gotta be separate?
Well, he can make a substitute motion to table this item and continue the public hearing, if you'd like to do that.
You could do that.
Yeah, you can amend your motion if you'd like, to table this item and continue public hearing on it until August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Of what I, of what I just said? That's fine. To, to, to table this item and continue the public hearing on it until the twenty, the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five hearing, or meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, so I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Billiat, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Chris, explain to me now, you know, we were talking about the data and the urgency of that, because yeah, obviously, we need the regulations, you expressed that to me before the meeting, so I'm not necessarily trying to delay anything, so you know, this is an important issue, so I, I know you were asking Becky about a date or something, so.
So the reason for me asking that is, is if you all, whether you all have comments, or folks from the community have comments that they would like to submit and suggested changes and stuff, ideally, we would have time, uh, if they could submit those, let's say, it's not like it's a have to, right? I mean, if you bring those comments to the public hearing that's continued, that's fine, it's a public hearing. But it would be advantageous if they could have those submitted to us, say by August eighteenth. That would then give us a day or so to incorporate those into the document itself, and then post that amended document online, so that, you know, everybody would be able to see them, right? And, and review them, and they can share the links and do all that kinda stuff. Um, so that we would all have a, a revised document to speak to next time.
Okay.
Where would the best way for them to produce those comments? Where would you like them to produce that to?
Uh, the best thing to do would be to email them to either Becky or myself, and just put in the subject line what they are, so.
If Becky, or whichever one of you would like to state your email address for the crowd?
Mine's C Pulaski at T P C G dot org. Pulaski is P U L A S K I. If you go to uh, the parish's website and you go to the planning and zoning department, um, it's got my email address right there.
There you go.
Alright.
Just a quick question, does this automatically mean that you're gonna incorporate all people's comments who submit to you and to the draft?
Well, they'll be.
That would be impossible.
It's, it's, we're gonna have the comments, whether, we're gonna try and incorporate them, but like I said earlier, they would be done so in a manner that we know that these are comments, it'll, it'll say like, we could have it a, a different color, and it could say who submitted it, right? So we know who, um, you know, that this is coming in, this is not part of the original draft, that this is part of the amended version.
I'm glad you clarified Becky, because obviously if, um, I'm just gonna use hypotheticals here, say Chris said, I wanna add an A, a new A, and I said, I don't want A, well, how would I possibly make both revis- both revisions to it? So like Chris said, we'll try to, you know, say this person wanted this, this person does not want this.
What if I said I wanted all the RVs to be pink?
To be pink? I, I would make a comment. I would make a comment that Becky Becknell, if you want, email that to me, and I'll put that on.
Alright, moving on. Okay, we are commissioner comments. I feel like everybody's had one. Chairman comments, I'm good. Public comments. Nope. Oh wait, yeah, I'm sorry, public comments, we got a, alright, Mr. Thibodeau.
Uh, the, Mr. uh, Mr. Pulaski, is there an update on the uh, the disaster recovery plan as far as approval of certain parts, or what we're proposing to the Community Development Agency?
Um, I mean, you know, most of the projects are in environmental review still, um. And we're waiting on uh, on that, um, and I think a few of the, we have um, done some procurement for um, uh, consulting firms to help um, with some of the projects that require A and E, architecture and engineering, um. And we have a pool of, of them, I can't remember the total number of uh, ones that were selected, but that way we don't have to procure for twenty-eight different times, right? We just do one big one, um. Other than that, I mean, I, I know that they're still working on getting that um, website set up so that everybody can see at an easy glance where the project is in the phase, and how much has been spent, and what's left, and all that kinda good stuff.
So our entire plan as proposed to the state has been approved?
Uh, well, we're still waiting on, uh, I think there's two or three final ones that we're still waiting on, um. But I don't have any of the details in front of me at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, so uh, next we will have a presentation by the Commissioner, Mr. Michael Billiat, regarding the Homa uh, United Nations. Do we have an idea about the time? Don't you dare.
About fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay.
Hey Robbie, I had, I had a comment.
Let me give Mr. Smith first, go ahead.
So to pick it back off of what Mr. Thibodeau was saying, um. So Homa today had an article about the parish council voting on one of those projects for the disaster recovery money. It was behind a paywall, so no one in the parish read it. We just had a thousand comments about why this wasn't gonna be good for the parish. I stated this specifically when we started this a year and a half ago. The parish has done a poor job at keeping the, the, the parish abreast, the the people who live here abreast of what's going on with that money. Every time that there's a discussion, it ends up getting railroaded by people who have no idea where the money came from, how it was allocated, what it's supposed to be spent on. I'm gonna say this again, we have to do a better job at that. Having a hundred people who don't even know why we got the money, telling us we should use the money on bridges, is ridiculous. We need to do a better job at educating the public on where we get the money, how we're spending it, and what the timeline is. I understand we we have this whole thing with the website coming up, but right now, that meeting's gonna get railroaded by all of those people coming there in a frenzy, because they are misinformed about what the facts are. That's just my only comment.
That's fact. Okay, um.
Can I say something?
Sure, Mr. Thibodeau.
Ditto. Thank you.
Alright, Derek and then Mr. Billiat will give you fifteen minutes, go ahead Derek.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Trevion, it's a great point, cause I've received a lot of people asking me questions. They thought it already passed, they didn't even know that it was up for next meeting. They see the headline, they click the button, they're not gonna pay the money. And they ask, why did they spend this money? And then they start assuming things.
Exactly.
Which, if you're gonna assume that much, just pay the five dollars, you know, read the article. But I agree, I, I think that's something the parish is working on, and um, that's a great, that's a great concern.
And that, that happens with just about every funding source. You know, they all, especially federal funding, always has strings attached. Um, even NOAA funding has strings attached, so uh, yeah, it's a challenge, for sure.
Alright, Mr. Billiat.
Thank you very much, thank you for uh, the time uh, to make this presentation. We are actually going to try to tell you, myself and my colleagues here, are going to try to tell you about, a little bit about how we got the, uh, the United Home Nation got the fifty-six million dollars that we recently received, and how we're going to be using it in Terbon Parish. So the goals of the presentation today is to explain to you what the United Home Nation Tribal Resilience and Cultural Preservation Plan is. You should have all gotten notebooks that kind of uh, go through our plan, so we're gonna go through that a little bit. We're gonna explain what U H N Rising uh, is, um, how will, how U H N Rising will impact Terbon Parish, and uh, what is the timeline for the U H N Roger, Rising Project. So it all started with the Greater New Orleans, Greater New Orleans Foundation is the largest philanthropic organization in uh, the state of Louisiana. Uh, it announced uh, ten grants, that it would give out ten grants of one hundred thousand dollars each. Uh, the, the challenge was designed to inspire community-centered infrastructure and environmental improvements across the South Louisiana region. Uh, you were, if you were going to, if you were an applicant, you had to have a viable plan to address nature-based solutions that could be funded through grants and have a long-lasting impact across South Louisiana. You had to be uh, able to show that you were gonna use the money to apply to three large funding opportunities. So this is seed money to pay for the experts needed to apply for larger funding opportunities. On October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, the United Home Nation won one of the ten grants and, and received one hundred thousand dollars, along with, by the way, the Terbon Parish Consolidated Government. You also received it. Uh, so our plan that we uh, that convinced the Greater New Orleans Foundation to give us the one hundred thousand dollars is a five-phase comprehensive resilience plan for the tribe. Uh, it involves the, 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 phase number one, it's a five phases. Phase number one is enhancing the central resilience hub that's located at four hundred Monarch Drive, the Old Oaks Assisted Living Center. That serves as the tribe's administration offices. Uh, phase two is retrofitting six satellite resist- resilience hubs in six parishes, including Terbon Parish. Uh, phase three is enhancing the tribe's communication systems. We own a radio station, podcast, uh, social media, et cetera. Phase four is economic development. Uh, the goal of that is to make the tribe less, less reliant upon government uh, grants. And the fifth phase is envisioning tribal migration, that's migrating the tribe from the lower bayous to higher land. Um, so one of the three grants, one of the three funding opportunities that we were uh, that we decided to apply uh, with the one hundred thousand dollar funding, remember, remember, we have to apply for three funding opportunities. The first one we applied for um, was the NOAA Climate Resilience Regional Challenge. Uh, it was a competitive grant program focused on collaborative projects that increase the resilience of coastal communities to extreme weather and other climate change impacts, including sea level rise. The letters of intent were due August thirteenth. The letters of intent were due August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the full application was due in February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so just to tell you a little bit about NOAA, NOAA stands for National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration. Uh, the United States, it's a government agency established in nineteen seventy within the Department of Commerce. To understand and predict changes in the earth's environment, including the oceans and atmosphere, and to manage and conserve coastal and marine resources. There were eight hundred and seventy letters of intent submitted to uh to NOAA for this challenge. To NOAA uh announced that it would be giving out five hundred and seventy-five million dollars through this challenge. There were eight hundred and seventy letters of intent from around the country, and one hundred and twenty of those were selected to submit full proposals. On July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, the United Home Nation became one of nineteen winners. Of the Climate Resilience Regional Challenge and received fifty-six million dollars. In funding for key aspects of our five-phase tribal resilience and cultural reser- preser- preservation plan. Um, we, the United Home Nation is assisted by three subcontractors, the law offices of Michael J. Billia, that's my office. The University of Michigan is our evaluation team and the Water Institute, uh uh uh. And there's a representative here from the Waters Institute here tonight. Uh, you can see here that we will be spending the money in the six service area. Parishes of the United Home Nation, we have a six parish service area. That's when we receive any funding or resources, that's where we are expected to distribute and allocate those resources. Terbon, La Fouch, Saint Mary, Jefferson, Plaquemine, and Saint Bernard will all be affected. You can see that we will have two satellite hubs in Terbon and will be establishing and retrofitting. A re- uh a satellite hub in each of the other parishes as well. In Terbon Parish, those numbers starting with twenty-three at the top of Terbon, that's that's in millions. And so there will be two uh resilience hubs in Terbon Parish, twenty-three million dollars split of the fifty-six million dollars right here. In the parish, uh the hubs, you can see we we named them by numbers. Uh, Hub One, that's the four hundred Monarch Drive, and Two A will take place in Terbon Parish. That is the historic Dagville Indian School, and three million dollars will be uh is devoted to just the renovation. Of what is one of seventeen uh places in the parish that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So we uh have a, what we call, we establish what we have, uh what we call a bottom-up approach. That means that we make our decisions about this project based upon community input. So we don't make decisions until we have had community uh input. Um, and the had have given the opportunity to the community to provide us with their lived experience. So our uh our our, we've created a Terbon Working Group that also gives input. Uh, you can see there uh as listed before you, there are six members, citizens of the United Home Nation, those are at the bottom. But we also have representatives from our community partners. We have the Terbon Parish Emergency Preparedness Office and the Terbon Parish Department of Planning. Uh, representing the Terbon Parish Consolidated Government on our working group. We also have the Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. Uh, emergency legal responders, a professor from the University of New Orleans that specializes in this area. And uh representatives from Second Harvest and the Terbon Parish Food Bank. We meet uh monthly and uh and everyone uh gives input on how the project is going. As you can see here, all the parishes uh in our six parish service areas surround Terbon Parish. Uh, we expect that all of the parishes and the emergency preparedness departments of those parishes will be working together on this comprehensive plan. So what are resilience hubs? A resilience hub is a community-serving facility designed to enhance local resilience by providing resources, support. And coordination before, during, and after natural disasters or other disruptions. Uh, the resilience hubs serve as community centers that are equipped to coordinate service, resource distribution and services in times of need. They are intended to be community-led and managed, fostering local leadership and engagement. And that's one of the reasons we we have the Terbon Working Group, and as we go into each of the parishes, we will have. Uh, similar working groups in each of the parishes, all working together for this comprehensive plan. So the key functions of resilience hubs, they provide essential resources and services to community members during emergencies. Such as food, shelter, and information. Uh, community billion building, resilience hubs act as gathering places for community activities, fostering social cohesion. And trust amongst residents. Uh, education and training, they offer educational programs and training to help residents prepare for and respond to emergencies. Enhancing overall community resilience. Uh, so we, I just put some contacts uh here, but uh I wanted to make sure that everybody knew also. That these resilience hubs and this money that we are spending and working with our parish leaders and community leaders. Uh, on these resilience hubs is open to everyone, not just tribal members of the United Home Nation. But the entire communities in all of these uh six parishes. Uh, I know that uh the Planning Commission likes to be made aware. Of significant uh progress on developments that is occurring in the parish. So I wanted to make sure that uh that I gave you the opportunity to hear from uh from me. And from my colleagues as to what the fifty-six million dollars that we received from NOAA. Uh, how it will go to benefit Terbon Parish. Uh, and it will uh it will benefit the parish greatly as well as. Um, as well as the other parishes and the surrounding parishes. So I'd just like to give some time of to the people who are working hard every day on this project. For you to just uh know them, these are uh some of the, three of the people up there is our Lance Fusell. He's our senior senior project manager, he's not here today. Um, but uh Ernest Brunet is going to come up and Brandon Dion and the other people that I'm working with. So thank you for the time, uh I'll and I'll hope that you will uh save questions till everyone has. Uh, has come up and told you how they, how they're working on the project.
Ernest Brunet Junior, I'm the four hundred Monarch Drive, I represent the United Home Nation. Um, I am the phase one coordinator of this project. And I oversee the retrofitting of our um, our central hub here right here in Homa, which is happens to be our office building, like Michael Billiard said. And our focus on this project is to increase the flood, wind, and energy resilience and expand our current programming, such as access to healthcare. Educational activities, food security, and economic opportunities in blue skies, which means, you know, everyday, everyday life. And then also in critical care needs and emergency responses in times of disasters in gray skies. Like Michael said, this ain't only gonna be for our tribal citizens, it's gonna be for the whole community, it's gonna be a big benefit in our parish. And I mean, we saw excited, I I oversee the Terbon Parish Working Group, and I had the opportunity to put this. This working group together, it's enormous, and it seems like it grows every meeting. I have new people that wanna attend, new people that wanna contribute, it's it's like we ain't gonna have no more room in our uh, a little. A little space to conduct our meetings, we're gonna have to move it somewhere else. I mean, it's it's exciting, I mean, it's just to hear the input, to get everybody's valuable ideas and to. What we're gonna do is take all them ideas and then put it into this building. To see what is most important to our tribal citizens, our community, and the main things that they need. And I appreciate the time to talk to y'all, thank y'all so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Brandon Dion, four hundred Monarch Drive. I am the phase two coordinator for the United Home Nation Project. I oversee the establishment and enhancement of the community satellite hubs. Uh, we operate in six parishes, Terbon, La Fouch, Saint Mary, Saint Bernard, Plaquemines, and Jefferson. So with that, we're just gonna aim to create a um resilience hub in those parishes. That serve as uh community resource centers. Places for development and places you can come when in disasters and blue skies, uh community programming. I appreciate this opportunity and thank you for having us here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hi, everyone, Ally Jem, four hundred Monarch Drive. I am the NOAA Coastal Resiliency Fellow. With all the different grant awardees, they were also offered the chance to host a fellow, so I'm super excited. Um, that they allow me to be on their team and work on such an important project. So I was onboarded as part of the community engagement team, like Michael was saying, this is a bottom-up approach. So every decision that we make, we're getting impact, um not just from tribal citizens, but also community members as well. One of our first big exciting opportunities was at the powwow. Um, we had a couple of different ways for our members to get involved. Um, but then we are also doing these working groups with Ernest, and we're compiling all that data, we're gonna be doing it as our U H N celebration as well. Um, and some other events throughout the year, but really my whole focus is just capturing all the different stories, experiences, and ideas of our community members. And then making sure that is reflected in our long-term plan. Thank you.
So I just wanna say, uh, Ally moved here from Florida to Homa just for this project. So we're very happy to have her and be attracting young vibrant minds to the area.
I wasn't aware I was supposed to speak tonight, so uh, it's okay. My name is Garvin Pittman, I am with the Water Institute of the Gulf, uh one-on-one River Road in Baton Rouge. Uh, our our, the Water Institute's role here to assist the United Home Nation is for them, uh is for capacity building. What does that mean? So Lance, Ernest, and Brandon and the rest of the crew are all very capable people. But they have never run a fifty-six million dollar federal grant, and they have never built fifty-six million dol- designed and built fifty-six million dollars worth of construction. We have, so we are here to work behind the scenes with them to help them grow into their capacity.
Thank you.
Um, last but not least, I'll be quick, uh my name is Andy Sternad, I'm an architect, uh twenty-two hundred Britannia Street, New Orleans. Uh, I'm principal at Wagner and Ball, we are a firm who specialize in resilience landscapes and buildings. And we've been selected, I'm grateful to the tribe for selecting us through public RFP to design and help construct the uh. Both phase uh phase one and future phases uh of the project. Uh, so we look forward to executing this work and just to give you a sense of the schedule, phase one is expected to begin design next month. Uh, design process for about a year and hope to go to bid next summer, followed by a fifteen to eighteen months of construction.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
So I just wanted, in in closing, I just wanted to note that in your packet, uh it tells you what Rising stands for, stands for. And it stands for resilience, independence, sovereignty, innovation, nurture, and generational. And with that, we will take any questions that you have.
Mr. Tibido, I was hitting it before you did.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I knew you was gonna say something.
Yeah, well, you knew, anyway, I I don't have a question, uh Commissioner, but I just wanna thank you for at least. Bringing the information, cuz that's extremely important on this side for what we do, but clearly for the public to understand that. That there's progress happening in Terbon, the U H N. Is been working for a long time in the area and uh obviously this is significant and. And suggest some signs of real progress, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tibido.
So I have a question, so i- if six parishes involved, who decides on where the fifty-six million is being split between the six? How does that work?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, uh the, one of the slides that I had up there, it uh there, in the grant that we wrote. You have to kind of designate the money before before you get it, right? And so in each parish, we have dedicated three million dollars to retrofitting a resilience hub in that parish. Now, for Terbon and La Fouch, the United Home Nation owns the resilience hub. So we own four four hundred Monarch Drive and we own the Dagville School. For La Fouch, we own another school that we are gonna turn into the resilience hubs. In the other parishes, we're working with those working groups and those emergency preparedness directors. Who are gonna kind of mirror what we've started in Terbon Parish for their Terbon Working Group, so it's gonna include. The uh emergency preparedness director, the planning director, and what have you. And we will work in those parishes for the community to choose the building that we will uh spend the money in.
Okay, yeah, thank y'all for all coming to, really appreciate y'all taking y'all time to come in and tell us a little bit more, uh Mr. McGuire. Oh, you got it, okay, uh Derek.
Oh, I thought I unclicked it, I was gonna ask the same question you asked Robbie about the breakdown of parishes, but uh. Mr. Billiard answered it perfectly, so I'm good too.
Okay, any other?
There's the uh, there's just the the money breakup, uh as far as what's going to the resilience hubs, so there's three million dollars for each parish. And that's important because as you can see, there's twenty-three million dollars for Terbon Parish. Because Terbon will house the central resilience hub, which is going to be uh what all of the resilience hub hubs work through. So the, this is meant for all the parishes to work together, so sometimes you have a hurricane hit one parish, but not another parish. Or sometimes you have people from other uh states that need uh spaces. So we are going to be uh a fully comprehensive community-wide uh benefit.
So another question, so when the projects are going on, is it each parish has one, has to be completed before another one starts, or it's simultaneously?
All of the phases, there's fi- five phases and all of the phases are uh meant to uh to be. Uh, progressing simultaneously.
Uh, Derek, it's you again?
It's time, I do, you probably explained this when you were on the slide and I forgot. Uh, the first slide is how many uh offices, second one's in millions, what's the third, the third column, one and two A, two B, through two F?
Yes, we have named our uh our phases, so just the central resilience hub, just renovating the. Retrofitting the central resilience hub is one phase, so that's phase one. So phase two has, is the retrofitting of each of the satellite hubs. So two A is Terbon Parish, cuz that's our first satellite hub. We broke up Terbon Parish into east side, west side, and so there is a resilience hub on the east side and on the west side. So both uh phase one and two A occur in Terbon Parish. So you see, the resilient, each of the resilience hubs, that's not a central hub, is getting three million. So that's why they, we're getting twenty-three million, cuz twenty is devoted to the central hub and three is devoted to. The uh satellite hub, but it's in the same parish, cuz we're having two in Terbon Parish. That happens to be where the United Home Nation has the largest populace. And the uh actually Terbon Parish has the largest percentage of Native Americans of any parish in the state of Louisiana. Uh, largely due to the United Home Nation's populace. So two B is what we've just named our resilience hub in uh in La Fouch Parish. And so we've just, that's just the name for them, we've named them as a number.
Uh, Mr. Gold. So um after the hubs are built and the fifty-six million is spent, are you generating your income or? To to subs- to maintain, to maintain these hubs?
So that's a great question, um the fi- our five-phase resilience plan includes the fourth phase, which is economic development. The, that economic development, the entire phase is not funded through NOAA. That entire phase is not funded through NOAA, but when we applied for the Greater New Orleans Foundation funding, we had to use the money. To apply for three grants, the NOAA one is just the first one we've applied to. We've, we're applying for two other grants, and it makes sense that since economic development is not funded by NOAA. That one or both of the next grants that we apply for through the one hundred thousand dollars received through Greater New Orleans Foundation. Focuses on our economic development strategy, and the the goal of that is to be independent of grant funding. Uh, and part of that is going to be to sustain, but we, to say, to sustain these resilience hubs. But the resilience hubs are also going to be sustained through its own programming and working within the parishes. Because we want to be able to uh fund additional education in all of these resilience hubs during blue skies. Meaning when it's not a hurricane, which is the majority of the time, right? Uh, so we are going to be uh working it through our own uh resources. To fund those resilience hubs throughout the parishes.
Mr. Pul- you you could, Mr. Gold?
And we are also, uh, we are also very open to commissions and uh committees. Who would like to suggest uh that we be put on the parish budget.
Mr. Pulaski. Yeah, Mike, uh, the the list of parishes on the screen there, um, I know Terbon has the highest of members. Are are the rest, are are the rest in like ranking order of number of members in each parish? Or how did you settle on on this specific list?
Okay, so the six, the six parish service area of the United Home Nation was not created for this grant. That's has always been our six parish service area, and that's because a lot of our members live in those parishes. But that's been our six parish service area for decades, or you know, centuries. So uh it just so happens that Terbon has the largest, that's where our headquarters is. La Fouch has the second-largest percentage of Native Americans in. La Fouch has the second-largest percentage of Native Americans in the, uh, of any parish in the state. It is not in ranked order here. It just so happens that Terbon and La Fouch have the uh, largest percentages because that's where we mostly live. Um, but the service area uh, is, uh, is a constant. It is not something we chose pursuant to this, uh, to this grant.
Uh, you're good?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to say congratulations. This looks amazing. Um, I'm, I'm so happy to see something that is diligent, is precise, um, and you're really tackling the needs of your community as well as spreading the wealth to the rest of us on the outside of the tribe. Um, I love it. I love it. I can't wait to see the updates and see what you guys get into. It's amazing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Uh, I wanted to say that Terbon Parish Consolidated Government has been a great partner in this project uh, from the beginning. Uh, we had, uh, even when we were applying before we had the grant, um, offices within the Terbon Parish Government wrote letters of support for our project. And now we have representatives from the Terbon Parish Government serving on our working groups and are informing uh, us throughout our process on, uh, so that we can be successful in uh, providing these resources to the members of our parishes and beyond. So thank you very much to the parish. Uh, Chris is on our, in our working group. He's written us support letters in the past. Earl Hughes is on our working group. And so we are, uh, we are very happy to have a longstanding uh, working relationship with the parish that's very fruitful.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll open it up to the public. Um, anybody else from the public would like to speak? All right, and a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.